The Ofoview Effect. It makes them realise that although we all come from different countries and speak different languages, we're all just passengers on the small blue ball. It's a reminder that none of us are alone and we're all part of a global family. We want the same for our communities and ourselves: a safe and prosperous world. Covid-19 has had a devastating impact. The pandemic has been a cruel reminder that in an interconnected world, what affects one of us can affect all of us. Fighting Covid-19 requires a team effort on an unprecedented scale. Right now, nations, health organisations and communities are all coming together to defeat this virus. The Access to Covid-19 Tools Accelerator is the world's biggest coalition of partners fighting Covid-19, dedicated to saving lives and suppressing the effects of the pandemic, uniting to accelerate the development and production of Covid-19 tests and treatments. And when vaccines become available, the ACT Accelerator will ensure all countries have access at the same time. Together, we can save lives and start the recovery our world needs. The Ofoview Effect reminds us of what we can achieve when we work together, when we use science for the good of all. Something amazing happens when astronauts see Earth from space for the first time. It changes their perspective on everything. It's called the Ofoview Effect. It makes them realise that although we all come from different countries and speak different languages, we're all just passengers on the small blue ball. It's a reminder that none of us are alone and we're all part of a global family. We want the same for our communities and ourselves: a safe and prosperous world.
Good morning, good afternoon and good evening. Your Excellencies, colleagues, ladies and gentlemen. Before we proceed with the opening of the meeting, I would like to give the floor to the Secretariat to make a short announcement. Secretariat, you have the floor please.
Your Excellency Dr Harsh Vedant, Chair of the Executive Board. I would like to remind the distinguished delegates of the following. A protection package has been distributed to all of you joining us in the Executive Board room here at WHO Headquarters at the entrance with your badge. This contains a leaflet with key information, a brochure with essential preventative measures, a hand sanitizer and four masks that you can use at this meeting over the next two days. As it is standard practice for all external visitors, Executive Board members are kindly asked to wear a mask any time in the building. This includes when in the Executive Board room, when seated and including when speaking. During the break later today, coffee will be served in the main cafeteria. In addition, the Barra Cafe will remain open from 8am until the end of the daily sessions. For those of you who would like to go to the cafeteria or Barra Cafe, a mask will have to be worn at all times, except when seated in the cafeteria or when eating and drinking in the area of the Barra Cafe. Please maintain your physical distance from others, at least one metre or three feet for those used to the empirical system. Cover your mouth and nose with a disposable tissue when coughing or sneezing and use the nearest waste-disposable receptacle to dispose of it after use. If you do not have a disposable tissue, cough or sneeze into your elbow. This room has been sanitised prior to your arrival, however, please continue to wash and/or sanitise your hands frequently. Access to this room has been granted to one representative per Executive Board member and essential staff from the Secretariat only. When leaving the building, exit will be through the main entrance, security staff will be opening the gate for you. And of course, please stay at home or in your accommodation if you become unwell, develop a fever or any other respiratory symptoms. In this case, please contact the numbers included in the protection kit and the instructions sent to you via email on Friday evening. With that, Your Excellency Chair, I return the floor to you.
Thank you. Now I declare open the special session of the Executive Board. I have particular pleasure in welcoming all the Executive Board members and their alternates and advisers who are joining the meeting physically in the EB room and through the virtual platform. I would like to address a special welcome to five new members of the board. From Australia, Ms Carolyn Edwards, Associate Secretary, Department of Health. From Chile, Dr Hendrik Paris-Mansila, Minister of Health. From Guana, Dr Frank C.S. Anthony, Minister of Health. From Singapore, Dr Janel Putuchieri, Senior Minister of State, Health and Communications and Information. From Tunisia, Dr Fakal Ben Sala, Director General of Health, Ministry of Health. I would also like to cordially greet representatives of Member States, observers, the United Nations, various United Nations bodies and specialised agencies, other intergovernmental organisations and non-state actors in official relations with WHO, whose participation is further evidence of the close relations between WHO and these organisations. I would also like to welcome our colleagues who are following the deliberations of this meeting. Before I proceed further, I would like to offer a few opening remarks on my behalf. DG Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, warm greetings to all of you at the fifth special session of the WHO Executive Board. I thank all Member States represented on the WHO Executive Board as well as those Member States who are not represented on the board. All UN agencies, their representatives and our partners for sparing their valuable time to attend this special session on the Covid-19 pandemic. Today, we are all meeting on the sidelines of a great battle that humankind is currently fighting. A war which has taken away many of our honourable men and women, those who have given away their lives so that we all may live, so that our nations may live and so that the world may live. It may only be fitting and proper for all of us to begin by paying our respects to those brave men and women who have sacrificed themselves in the pandemic and those who are continuing to fight relentlessly and selflessly. The world shall never forget their sacrifice and yet it is upon the world and each one of us to dedicate ourselves to finish the unfinished task with increased devotion and let their sacrifices not go in vain. Let humanity not perish, which brings me to the sanctity of where I stand and speak. A powerful forum with members that can transform the situation. The whole world continues to look upon all of us here at the World Health Organisation to pave the way for a brighter and disease-free world with the utter belief that we are all God's children. Even as the human tragedy caused by the pandemic of 35 million affected and more than a million dead breaks our hearts, we have to be conscious of the fact that billions around the world are looking at our organisation with high hopes and expectations. Excellencies, today there are compelling circumstances that have forced us all to meet virtually at a time of one of the gravest epochs of human tragedy, at a time when we all understand that there are going to be many urgent health challenges in the next two decades. I have said this before and I repeat, all these challenges such as the present pandemic demand a shared response because these are shared threats requiring shared responsibility to act. And of course, this shared responsibility is also the core philosophy of our alliance of Member Nations that comprise the World Health Organisation. At WHO, we are already providing thought leadership to the entire world in the sphere of public health, engaging in partnerships where joint action is needed, shaping the research agenda and stimulating the dissemination of valuable knowledge. We believe in the principles that the enjoyment of the highest attainable standard of health is one of the fundamental rights of every human being without distinction of race, religion, political belief, economic or social condition. We all understand that therapeutics, diagnostics and vaccines for the whole world is the only way out of this pandemic. Global collaboration is paramount. Governments, industry and philanthropy must pool resources to pay for the risk, the research, manufacturing and distribution, but with the condition that the rewards should be available to everyone regardless of where they have been developed. We also understand that strengthening emergency preparedness and risk management is key to addressing the health risks posed by emerging diseases and for progress towards sustainable development goals. Committing to disaster risk reduction and management would require early and transparent identification and communication of risks, maintaining the momentum in investing in people and resilient health systems, strengthened multi-sectoral collaboration, stress on the swifter generation of evidence, accelerated research and development efforts and rational evidence-based implementation of plans. I must take this opportunity to acknowledge all Member States for acting with speed and scale during the rapidly evolving pandemic and displaying solidarity to help each other on a bilateral as well as a multilateral basis. The hard work and determination demonstrated by the countries have saved countless lives amid the ongoing response. This fifth special session of the WHO Executive Board has been called specifically to focus on the measures necessary to ensure the full and effective implementation of the terms of resolution WHOA 73.1 on Covid-19 response. Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, you will recall that to bring the world together, to fight the Covid-19 pandemic, the 73rd World Health Assembly adopted a landmark resolution on 19th May 2020. The resolution WHOA 73.1 titled Covid-19 Response was co-sponsored by more than 130 countries and calls for the intensification of efforts to control the pandemic and for equitable access to and fair distribution of all essential health technologies and products to combat the virus. Through the resolution, our DG was requested to initiate at the earliest appropriate moment and in consultation with the Member States, a step-wise process of an impartial, independent and comprehensive evaluation, including using existing mechanisms as appropriate to review experience gained and lessons learned from the WHO-coordinated international health response to Covid-19. Through the said resolution, the DG was also required to make recommendations to improve capacity for global pandemic prevention, preparedness and response, including through strengthening as appropriate the WHO Health Emergencies Programme. In accordance with the Health Assembly Resolution WHOA 73.1, WHO Director General Dr Tedros has established the Review Committee on the Functioning of the International Health Regulations 2005 during the Covid-19 response, initiated the Independent Panel for Pandemic Preparedness and Response and continued full engagement with the Independent Oversight and Advisory Committee for the WHO Health Emergencies Programme to ensure the continuous improvement of the programme. On behalf of the board, I convey a sincere thanks to these committees and panels for their untiring efforts. We will hear updates from them tomorrow. Ladies and gentlemen, I believe that we at WHO must all rise to the occasion to save the powerless and the voiceless, to see hope in these darkest of hours. This is one chance, one moment to forge open collaborations and reaffirm that fundamental truth that the world is one. Before we begin the proceedings of the special session, we must redeem our pledge to work with the global community of partners for the efficient, effective and responsive discharge of public health obligations. I look forward to meaningful and productive deliberations during this special session where we should share our learnings from how each one of us is tackling this catastrophe, how we can support the financial or technical gaps that some of our Member States may have and agree to continue R&amp;D in an aggressive and collaborative way and share the fruits of our efforts in a fair and equitable manner. Let there be no doubt that we shall overcome. Let there be no doubt that yes, we can. I thank you for granting me this privilege to open this session and welcome you. Friends, due to the current restrictions imposed in response to Covid-19, this special session will be held using a hybrid format. This means that EB Special Section 5 will involve having the 34 members of the board or another member of the EB Members Delegation, such as a delegate located closer to the meeting venue, physically present with other delegation members, other Member States and other participants as appropriate participating through the virtual platform. Before we proceed, I would like to say a few words about the virtual platform. Participants on the virtual platform may request the floor by raising their hands. This involves clicking on the icon labelled «Participants » at the bottom of the screen and then clicking on the button labelled « Raise Hand ». In terms of procedural motions, EB members or another delegate of the EB Members Delegation physically present in the EB room wishing to raise a point of order or exercise a right of reply should do so by raising their nameplates. EB members and delegates of that EB Members Delegation not physically present in the EB room and wishing to raise a point of order or exercise a right of reply should do so by opening the chat window at the bottom of the screen and sending a message to the procedural issues. The right of reply will be accorded at the end of the day. Delegates are kindly required to keep their interventions as brief as possible and in the interest of time, it would be appreciated if interventions could be limited to up to three minutes. In addition to one-to-one chat, a public chat will be available to participants. Please be informed that the public chat is not intended to replace and/or complement the actual debate. To regulate the conduct of this hybrid session, we shall now take up the draft decision contained in document EB Special Session Flash 5/Flash 4. May I take it that the Executive Board is ready to adopt the special procedures contained in document EBSS Flash 5/Flash 4 and to apply them to this meeting? I see no objection. It is so decided. Thank you. I now turn to a matter related to the officers of the board. Board members may recall that at EB 147 in May 2020, Dr Wolda Lawrence of Guana was elected as Vice Chair from the region of the Americas. Since then, I understand that Dr Lawrence is no longer available to serve in this position. I understand that the region of Americas has consulted and proposes that Dr Frank C.S. Anthony be elected as Vice Chair. Do I take it that the board agrees with this proposal? As I see no objection, it is so decided. We shall now turn to item two of the provisional agenda, which is about adoption of the agenda and method of work. The Director General has convened this special session in consultation with the Chair of the board in application of Rule 6 of the Rules of Procedures of the Executive Board of the World Health Organisation with a view to taking the measures necessary to ensure the full and effective implementation of the terms of resolution WHOA 73.1 on Covid-19 response, which was adopted by consensus at the World Health Assembly in May 2020. We now proceed with the adoption of the provisional agenda as contained in documents EBSS Flash 5/Flash 1, Rev 1 and EBSS Flash 5/Flash 1 annotated. May I take it that the board wishes to adopt the agenda in documents EBSS Flash 5/Flash 1, Rev 1 and EBSS Flash 5/Flash 1 annotated? I see no objection, it is so decided. Now, the agenda before us is about the method of work. The agenda that is before us may only have two substantive items. However, I am told that Germany wants to intervene. I'll request Germany to make a statement. Germany may have the floor please.
Mr Chairman, Mr Director General, dear colleagues. I have the honour to speak on behalf of the European Union and its Member States. The European Union works closely with the World Health Organisation on a wide range of subjects, both within the European region and on a global level. As agreed in the Exchange of Letters of 2000 between the WHO and the European Commission concerning the consolidation and intensification of cooperation and without prejudice to any future conclusion of a general agreement between the WHO and the European Union, the European Union delegation attends the meetings of the Executive Board as observer. As in previous EB meetings, we asked the Executive Board to kindly agree that the European Union delegation be also invited to attend and participate without vote in the deliberations of the meetings of its committees and subcommittees, drafting groups or other subdivisions thereof, addressing matters falling within union competence in the fifth special session of the Executive Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Germany. I am told that Austria also wants to intervene. Austria, you can have the floor please.
Dear Honourable Chair, Director General, Honourable Delegates and Members of the Executive Board, before we start our consultations on the manifold of progress and work we are doing on the Covid responses and crises, let me take the opportunity to address the role of us here, the Executive Board, the Executive Board in its role as governing body. Matter of fact, the Executive Board did not convene on matters of Covid-19 since early February. I am happy that we are convening now, but I want to remind us that some of us wanted to convene us earlier this year. I personally was proposing a special session of the EB already in April and we had discussions among some of us members of the Executive Board to convene in August. Anyway, now we are here, better than never and this is good so. But this is also a question of principles. Is the Executive Board an active governing body or just a ceremonial one which is experienced, expressing gratitudes only towards the work we are doing and the good work we are doing? I personally want to see us here as an active executive board, one which is guiding us through this pandemic crisis, through finding solutions and strategies in this most challenging public health crisis and times of socio-economic affairs. We are the governing body, meaning we have to exercise leadership. In these two days, we will see many things happening in good progress, in the right direction and I am very pleased about that. Nevertheless, Honourable Chair, I am asking you to convene at the earliest possible time a retreat session for EB members only, to deliberate exactly on this how the Executive Board can strengthen its role as an active governing body, not only for matters of the Covid crisis but also on strengthening the core governance of this valuable organisation. This crisis should also strengthen the role of us here as Executive Board. I am happy to prepare such a retreat with other members of the Executive Board to have a fruitful and forward-looking discussion. This is not a critical statement, this is a statement in favour of this wonderful organisation. This is a statement in favor of this wonderful organization.
Thank you, Austria, for your words of wisdom. I would request MS to speak to agenda items and take note of Austria's offer. And also, I take it that there are no objection to Germany's proposal. I see none, so it is so decided. Now, I shall talk about the method of work. The agenda that is before us may only have two substantive items. However, they are challenging ones that have generated a lot of interest and that will certainly raise much discussion. It is important that we hold the meetings in a constructive manner. I would like to inform you that in line with the special procedures to regulate the conduct of this meeting, individual statements by members of the board will be limited to three minutes. Individual statements by all member states not represented on the board and associate members will be limited to two minutes. Statements by observers, invited representatives of United Nations and other participating intergovernmental organizations will be limited to one minute. Regional and group statements will be limited to four minutes. I will invoke Rule 31 on a time limit for speakers during our discussions. I will also invoke Rule 14 and will call to order any speaker whose remarks are irrelevant to the subject under discussion. I would also like to remind you that delegates should deliver their speech at a moderate speed that allows for its interpretation and ensures their message is conveyed clearly and accurately. As a guide, please take into account that a three-minute speech is about 330 words. Please send a copy of your oral statements in advance to the email address interpret@who.in t. In terms of the order of speakers, the floor will be first provided to EB members that have raised their nameplates in the room. Then I will ask the Secretariat to moderate discussion on the virtual platform by giving the floor first to any EB members that have raised their hands, followed by member states not represented on the board. I understand that EB members and other member states may have sent in a pre-recorded video statement. The pre-recorded video statements by EB members will be played at the end of the statements by the EB members and the pre-recorded video statements by member states not represented on the board will be played after the statements by member states. Then the floor will be given to observers and representatives of United Nations and other intergovernmental organizations. I would like to inform you that in the context of WHO reform and in line with decision EB 134.3, this session of the Executive Board is accessible to participants via live broadcasting. The link can be found on the WHO webpage. Does the board agree to these proposals for the organization of work on the understanding that adjustments may need to be made in line with the progress of our deliberations during the day? I see no comments. It is so decided. Let us now decide on the timing of meetings. I would like to propose that the board meet from 12:00 to 15:00 hours Central European Time and then from 16:00 to 18:00 hours Central European Time. I take it that there are no objections to the proposed meeting schedule. As I see no objection, it is so decided. This concludes our consideration of Agenda Item 2. We will now turn to Agenda Item 3, Update on Implementation of Resolution WHO 73.1 2020 on the COVID-19 Response. The background document for today's discussion is EBSS 5/2. It gives me great pleasure to give the floor to Dr. Tedros, Director General of WHO. Dr. Tedros, you may please have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Your Excellency Ashwadhan, Mister of Health and Family Welfare of India, Namaste. Excellencies, dear colleagues and friends. Good morning, good afternoon and good evening. I am delighted to be able to welcome representatives from member states here in the room and online. It seems incredible to think that when this board met in February, there were just 151 cases and wonders outside China of what we now call COVID-19. Today, almost 35 million cases of COVID have now been reported to WHO and more than 1 million people are reported to have lost their lives. The real number is certainly high. Numbers can blind us to the reality that every single life lost is someone who loved and was loved by others, someone's mother, father, someone's sister, someone's brother, daughter or son. They're the reason we are here. And I would like to invite you to join me in standing for a moment of silence to honor those we have lost. Thank you. Thank you so much. Although all countries have been affected by this virus, we must remember that this is an even pandemic. Ten countries account for 70% of all reported cases and deaths and just three countries account for half. Dr. Mike Ryan will give a more detailed epidemiological analysis. Not all countries have responded the same way and not all countries have been affected the same way. There are roughly four different situations that countries are facing. First, some countries act decisively and quickly and have avoided large outbreaks. Second, some countries have had large outbreaks but were able to bring them under control and continue to suppress the virus. Third, while some countries brought the virus under control as economies and societies have eased restrictions, there has been an increase in cases. And fourth, there are still some countries that are in the intense phase of transmission. What we have learned in every region of the world is that with strong leadership, clear and comprehensive strategies, consistent communication, an engaged, empowered and enabled population, it's never too late. Again, it's never too late to change any kind of tide. Every situation can be turned around and hard-won gains can be easily lost. The pandemic underlines the fundamental importance of investing in public health and primary healthcare, even as we fight the virus. Since the beginning of the pandemic, WHO has worked around the clock to support countries to prepare and respond to this new virus. On the 30th of January, I declared the public health emergency of international concern, the highest level of alarm under international law. Just four days later, WHO unleashed our first strategic preparedness and response plan. But even before that, one of our highest priorities was to rapidly identify this new virus and enable countries to test for it. So I'll take few minutes to tell you about the progress of the SPRP or the plan. Within two weeks of the first cases being reported to WHO, we developed and published the first protocol for developing a PCR test. We worked with experts in Berlin, London, Hong Kong, Rotterdam and others to develop the first diagnostic test. Because the first thing, which is very important, was to find where the enemy is and that's why we focused on having the right test kit. On the 2nd of February, less than a month into the outbreak, the first tests were produced and we began shipping them around the world. At the same time, we worked to expand PCR testing capacity around the world, leveraging national influenza centers and building capacity where it was lacking. We expanded PCR testing capacity for COVID-19 in Africa especially, from just two countries in January to 32 by the end of February and all countries by mid-June. As you remember, it was only South Africa and Senegal who were able to do the test. Since then, we have distributed millions of tests to more than 150 countries. No laboratory test in history has been developed and deployed with that speed. We didn't isolate the virus or WHO didn't isolate the virus. We didn't sequence or publish the genome. We didn't manufacture the assays and we don't make PCR machines. But it was WHO that connected the dots to give countries the capacity to find and respond to this new virus. We have taken the same approach to developing guidance. Ten months ago, this virus was completely unknown to the world. We have now published more than 400 guidance documents for individuals, communities, schools, businesses, industries, health workers, health facilities and governments. But we haven't just published the guidance. Through the openwho.org online learning platform, we have built country capacity by providing free training in 133 COVID-19 courses, from infection prevention and control to clinical management, operational planning, data collection and much more. And importantly, we have gone far beyond the six official UN languages, delivering courses in 41 languages, demonstrating our commitment to multilingualism. The COVID-19 response actually have speeded up our plan for multilingualism and we will continue to expand that to even more than 41 languages which we are doing now. Our country teams have worked closely with governments to write national plans and identify needs and to match those needs with more than 600 partners and 74 donors through the groundbreaking COVID-19 Partners Platform. WHO and our partners sent experts' missions to more than 130 countries to provide operational and technical support. We have sourced, validated, purchased and delivered masks, gloves, respirators, gowns, goggles, swabs, tests, reagents, thermometers, oxygen concentrators, ventilators and more to 177 countries and territories around the world. And more than 12,000 patients have now been enrolled in the WHO Solidarity Therapeutics Trial in nearly 500 hospitals in 29 countries. But even as we have developed and deployed these tools, we started discussions with many partners about how to accelerate research and development while ensuring fair distribution of diagnostics, therapeutics and vaccines. In April, the Access to COVID-19 Tools Accelerator was born, an unprecedented global partnership that's delivering tangible results based on the two objectives I said, accelerating development of products and fair distribution. Together with our partners, last week, we reached an agreement to make 120 million new rapid tests available to low and middle income countries. As soon as the data were published showing dexamethasone was effective in treating patients with severe and critical diseases, we secured critical supplies for up to 4.5 million patients to ensure patients in lower-income countries don't miss out on this lifesaving medicine. COVAX is supporting the development of nine vaccines with more in the pipeline. 168 countries and economies are covered by the COVAX facility, representing more than two-thirds of the world's population and we are still in discussion with another 25 countries. All of this has only been possible because of the power of partnership. WHO doesn't have the mandate or the capacity to do everything, but we do have the unique mandate and capacity to coordinate the global response by harnessing the collective strengths of our many partners across the UN system and beyond. And it has only been possible because of you, because of you, our member states. This is your WHO. The guidance we provide is not just written by WHO staff. It's developed in close consultation with experts from your national institutions, drawing on professional networks developed over decades. The PPE and tests we deliver are paid off for with the funds you provide and thank you so much for the funding so far based on the SPRP we presented to you. Everything we have accomplished together in the past nine months has only been possible because of the deep-rooted transformation that we have designed and implemented together over the past three years. Throughout the response, we have seen how WHO's transformation is helping to make us more agile and responsive and to deliver the support the world needs. Thank you for endorsing our transformation design last year, March 2019. Even part of its implementation is helping us to move in the right direction. Our new operating model, which aligns our organizational structures vertically at all three levels, region and countries, is helping us to deliver impact in countries. Working with the Emergencies Programme and building on the Research and Development Blueprint, our newly formed Science Division has brought together researchers from around the world to identify priorities, initiated the solidarity trial and quality-assured our scientific publications and guidance. Now the Science Division is ready to launch a solidarity trial for vaccines. Our new division of Emergency Preparedness has developed the COVID-19 Partners Platform, supported interaction reviews and is working closely with the Universal Health Coverage Divisions to improve and maintain public health functions and essential health services. Working with the Emergencies Programme, the Division of Data and Delivery for Impact and the Digital Health Department have developed tools under ICD-10 for monitoring COVID-19-associated mortality. The openwho.org learning platform has provided powerful proof of concept for the WHO Academy, the new WHO Academy, and training millions in many countries. And the Global Preparedness Monitoring Board has developed its second report, as you know, has developed its second report, as you know, providing an independent assessment of key gaps in global pandemic and preparedness last year and this year. Our transformation started with Sertin's general programme of work, which you endorsed two years ago. With a new mission statement and ambitious triple billion targets, the pandemic has demonstrated the intimate links between each of the triple billion targets. Health and well-being, universal health coverage and emergency preparedness and response are three strands of a rope that together provides strong support for social, economic and political stability. Our first priority must be to keep people healthy and out of hospitals by addressing the root cause of disease in the air people breathe, the food they eat, the water they drink and the environment in which they live and work. When people do need health services, those services must be accessible, affordable and high-quality. And just as many countries invest heavily in their military capacity in case of conflict, so they must invest in robust public health capacities to prepare for, prevent, detect and respond rapidly to outbreaks when they occur. The three pillars of the GPW you endorsed last year actually bring this kind of interconnection, a very seamless process between the three. The pandemic is a powerful demonstration of why the triple billion targets we have committed together are so important and why we must pursue them with even more determination. We're not on the wrong path, we're on the right path, but we need to go faster, we need to go farther and we need to build on the transformation, we need to go together. Excellencies, the pandemic is a wake-up call for all of us. We must all look in the mirror and ask what we can do better and learn honestly. Following your guidance, I have initiated several reviews through the Independent Panel for Pandemic Preparedness and Response, the International Health Regulation Review Committee and the Independent Oversight and Advisory Committee for the WHO Health Emergencies Programme. I look forward to their findings and recommendations and to building on our transformation to strengthen global preparedness and response. All three committees will brief you on their progress tomorrow. As you know, I have also launched an urgent investigation into reports of alleged sexual exploitation and abuse by people who identified themselves as working for WHO in the Democratic Republic of the Congo. We have identified a list of outstanding potential candidates to lead this investigation and I will have more news soon. I wish to be very clear. We hold ourselves to the highest standards and the behaviour described in this report is appalling and unacceptable. We're totally committed to accountability, both for the results we deliver and for our conduct and we're committed to continuous learning, continuous listening and continuous improvement. But even as these reviews continue, there are already many things we can do together to improve. For us, change is a constant, I repeat. Change is a constant and that's what we have been doing the last three, four years and we need to continue. We can never sit still. Science and disease patterns are constantly evolving and so must WHO. Many member states have already come forward with suggestions about how to strengthen the global system for emergency preparedness and response. The pandemic has demonstrated that highly infectious pathogens cannot be contained by any single sovereign state. We can only confront them by working together in solidarity and with a one-health approach that addresses the links between human, animal and planetary health. The world needs a system of robust peer review and mutual accountability for rapid and effective surveillance, preparedness and response. This is something we have already started working on, learning from the system of universal periodic review used by Human Rights Council. And I would like to thank the Africa Group in general, but Central African Republic and Benin for bringing forward these suggestions. In the spirit of change as a constant, we encourage all countries to come up with new ideas like France and Germany did and others. We have to be open to changes and we have to implement change now. Excellencies, colleagues and friends. With the northern hemisphere influenza season approaching and cases increasing in many countries, there are three key priorities for the next three months. First, we must realise the full potential of the ACT Accelerator. Currently, the financing gap for the ACT Accelerator stands at 34 billion US dollars, with 14 billion US dollars needed now to maintain momentum. History will not judge us kindly if it records that trillions of dollars were poured into domestic stimulus packages, but the international community could not find the funds to ensure equitable access for all people. This is not charity. It's the fastest way to end the pandemic and catalyse the global economic recovery. Second, we must all continue to make the most of the tools we have: hand hygiene, physical distancing, respiratory etiquette, masks, ventilation, surveillance, isolation, compassionate care, contact tracing and quarantine. We know all this works and that's why WHO says do it all. And said, "I will never be tired of calling for solidarity." Finger pointing will not prevent a single infection. Apportioning blame will not save a single life. What saves life is national unity and global solidarity. Last week, I had the great honour of speaking to Captain Sir Tom Moore as he approached his 100th birthday earlier this year. Captain Tom decided to raise 1,000 pounds for the UK's National Health Service by completing 100 laps of his garden. He ended up raising 40 million pounds. For me, Captain Tom represents the selflessness and solidarity the world needs to overcome this pandemic. Everyone must play their part, from the individual decisions we make to protect ourselves and others, to the discussions we will have this week on behalf of the people we serve. We're all in this together. I hope you know, and we all know, that fighting each other wastes more energy. We can actually finish this virus with less energy. Let's use all the energy we have to use, let's use all the energy we have to fight the virus, not each other. But I am encouraged that we share a common vision for a stronger WHO and a healthier, safer, fairer world. Seventy-five years after the birth of the United Nations, the need for national unity and global solidarity has never been more apparent. The only way forward is together. Sorry you must be tired of me saying this again and again because that's key, that's what we're lacking. We have all been humbled and inspired by the health workers all over the world who have put themselves in harm's way in the service of others. Let's do the national unity and global solidarity in respect of those heroes, heroines in the frontline. And please join me in showing our appreciation and solidarity for these health heroes. To all health workers in the world, please accept our respect and appreciation. Thank you so much and my appreciation and respect to all our member states. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr Tedros. Now I would like to give the floor to the Secretariat to provide a technical update on the COVID-19 response. Secretariat, you can have the floor, please.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Your Excellencies and colleagues, this presentation will give you a brief update on the current epidemiologic situation. It will summarise WHO's response, in particular, as relevant to the implementation of Resolution WHOA 73.1 which you have in your documents and identify some challenges and opportunities in the current month. The said document, WHOA 73.1, focused in its request to WHO on coordination across the UN, strengthening WHOA's capacity, assisting member states with both the response, continuity of healthcare, assisting national strategic planning, normative guidance tools, data and evidence, working with FAO and YU and partners to identify the zoonotic source, informing the MS on financing and global access to equipment and supplies. Next slide, please. The latest epidemiologic curve shows that the pandemic continues to evolve and with the continued surge in Southeast Asia and is once more on an upward trajectory in the northern hemisphere. Next slide. Okay, the Director General has already referred to the different transmission scenarios. This pandemic is neither dynamically behaving nor impacting in the same way in every member state and every region. The impact in terms of cases per million, because of that, varies around the world. So when we look at raw numbers, it's difficult to really look at the impact per head of population. This map shows you the diversity of that impact around the world and equally so in terms of deaths. Last week, we reached a grim and tragic milestone of 1 million deaths reported on COVID-19. Every one of those lives lost is a tragedy, as DG has said. Many deaths though have been averted and many more lives can be protected through our collective strength, resolve, unity and solidarity, as repeatedly called for by the Director General. The global numbers belies significant differences, as I said, in regional epidemiology. Southeast Asia continues to see a surge in cases with Europe and the eastern Mediterranean regions showing an increase in cases and deaths. The situation in Africa and the Western Pacific is currently rather more positive. Our current best estimates tell us that about 10% of the global population may have been infected by this virus. This varies depending on country, varies from urban to rural, it varies between different groups. What it does mean is that the vast majority of the world remains at risk. We know the pandemic will continue to evolve, but we also know we have the tools that work to suppress transmission and save lives right now and they are at our disposal. The future depends on the choices we collectively make about how we use those tools, develop, scale up and distribute others. WHO set out three very simple goals at the beginning of this pandemic to reduce transmission of the virus, to protect vulnerable and to save lives. All our collective efforts over the past nine months and the knowledge we have gained with you about this virus means that we collectively are in a far stronger position now to achieve them than perhaps impossible even only a few months ago. The strategic plan focused on mobilisation of all sectors, controlling spreading cases, suppressing community transmission, reducing mortality and developing safe and effective vaccines, therapeutics and diagnostics. The WHO Strategic Preparedness and Response Plan, as I said, was published on February 4th. DG has mentioned that, four days after the declaration of the global public health emergency on the 30th of January. It was born of that doctrine of putting countries and health at the heart of the response and its influence can also be seen both in the Global Humanitarian Response Plan and the UN Socioeconomic Framework for COVID-19, both which are strong pillars on health systems and health access. Since the first days of this response, I think I can say that we've witnessed that the reforms and transformation of WHO initiated by Dr Tedros since his first days in office have changed the way the organisation does business and have started to pay dividends. Putting countries and communities plus delivery and impact at the heart of everything we do was also well underway before COVID-19. But those changes in organisation and culture have been hardwired by this crisis. Creation of the Division of Emergency Preparedness within the Emergencies Programme, the joint stewardship of the RND Blueprint as an agile cross-programme initiative, the creation of the Science Division, bringing new services to ensure the highest quality in our scientific work, strengthening of the emergency functions and business operations, information technology and donor engagement have all been tested in recent emergencies. COVID-19 has signaled strongly that WHO has fundamentally changed the way it operates as an organisation as part of the broader UN system. With respect to the current response, WHO's emergency framework was fully implemented with a full incident management team triggered on the 1st of January. WHO's regional platforms and country presence has been fully mobilised. WHO's Health Security Council, led by DG, and engaging senior management at HQ with the six regional directors and their teams. Internal search capacity has been utilised with staff available to work with WHO within the Incident Management Support Team been doubled with now over 360 technical staff directly supporting the response with hundreds of others continuing to provide support, services to the response, continued delivery on essential services and delivery of WHO's broader mandate. In addition, across the organisation, we have engaged nearly 2,000 consultants of which 1,500 have been deployed at country level and 500 between headquarters and the regions. The Strategic Preparedness and Response Plan provided the template that countries could adapt and deliver with support from WHO. The COVID-19 Partners Platform enables governments, UN agencies, partners and donors to plan together and deliver in real time. More than 170 countries now have COVID-19 Preparedness and Response Plans in large part thanks to the leadership and engagement of regional directors with 111 countries planning, coordinating and requesting resources through the Partners Platform. We put the funds we have received to good use. Of the 1.5 billion US dollars that WHO has raised so far, the vast majority, approximately 90%, has been allocated to support our activities at regional and country level, thanks to you and others, more than 70 donors who have provided financial contributions. In addition, WHO and the United Nations Foundation successfully launched the COVID-19 Solidarity Response Fund which has so far raised more than 224 million dollars for the COVID response from close to 560,000 individuals, companies and philanthropic institutions. Of course, COVID-19 is a crisis that touches every aspect of every society and our response needs to be equally broad-based. Dr Tedros worked with the UN Secretary General to trigger the mobilisation of the UN Crisis Management Team that brings together the collective strength of 23 UN entities under one response umbrella with WHO coordinating. UN CMT reports weekly to the Secretary General's Executive Committee. Crisis Management Team has met 27 times and established nine work streams with key agencies coordinating together on guidance, strategy, communication, supply chain management, UN staff health and media, animal-human interface, education, travel and human rights. On the humanitarian front, the Inter-Agency Standing Committee initiated a system-wide scale-up of the UN's humanitarian response capacity tailored specifically to the challenges of COVID-19. We thank Mark Locock for his leadership in taking that work forward across the UN system. We've worked with Robert Piper and his team at the UN Development Corporation Office, continually coordinated with United Nations country teams in 136 countries to ensure that the UN system and every other partner is pulling in the same direction to support member states. To give an idea of the sheer scale of this process, weekly coordination meetings with country teams can have up to 800 UN resident coordinators, WHO representatives and other members of the UN country teams to hear from regional and global leaders and to feedback on the lessons learnt and the experience from the ground. We have just completed the preliminary review of the experience with CMT and plan a more in-depth review in due course. The new way of doing business in WHO extends to WHO's core strength as a technical and normative agency. We've been able to draw extensively on our convening power, expert networks, advisory groups, WHO collaborating centers, and our strong ties with national knowledge and expertise to rapidly gather and synthesize evidence into technical outputs and guidance across a broad range of thematic areas. Within the first days of the alert of this new disease, WHO Incident Management Team began developing and adapting a comprehensive set of technical guidance for member states. The first set of guidance was made available to all countries on the 10th, 11th, and 12th of January, respectively. WHO, with incredible inputs from experts around the world, has produced 400 guidance documents and hundreds of other information products, covering the spectrum of COVID-19, preparedness response, and essential health services. They are constantly updated and reevaluated in the light of new evidence and are adapted by regional and country office to shape the response where it matters most. It is, however, not only about quantity, it is also about speed and quality. The work led by the Science Division has been critical in this regard. In fact, the creation of the Science Division has created a sister program for the Emergencies Program. And I thank my sister Sumya and her staff for their partnership, and she's sitting here, by Dr. Tedros and myself, and will be available to take questions on many aspects of our science-based response. Sorry, there's just a slide of the various things we've been doing and turning translating technical knowledge into real action at country level. And I thought I was clicking. You see a couple of slides here on the Science Division collaboration with the IMST, and just exactly how the Science Division has been able to- and there are many other programs, I'm using the Science Division as an example, with so many of our other colleagues in health systems, in the access to essential health technologies, in vaccine programs, in the business operations, in IT, who've all worked so closely to support the program and to support the organization and you in all of this. And in particular, not only adding more speed and assurance to our guidance, but ensuring the highest possible technical quality of our guidance. There is a really useful second check in everything we do to have that independent publication review committee constantly on our tails, ensuring that we've used the best evidence and that we're essentially listening to all views before issuing important guidance. In addition to guidance, another core function of WHO is really being at the center of data and putting data at the heart of our actions. WHO took rapid action with partners to establish a global surveillance system that gathers standardized data at global, regional, and country level. Each day, each night, WHO continues to collate, validate, analyze, and disseminate daily cases and deaths and many other pieces of data across the world. These data are routinely published on our websites and through a wealth of country and regional-specific situation reports and dashboards, as well as globally via the COVID-19 dashboard. That's just a little movie of the dashboard itself, the various screens, and how you can interact with that in real time across all countries, all regions, and a large number of different parameters of data. Through the Unity Studies, WHO has created another platform for standardized seroprevalence measurement and provided protocols and standardized diagnostic panels to countries to answer fundamental questions about the key drivers of COVID-19 transmission. Of the 50 countries implementing a Unity Study Protocol, 58% are low and middle-income countries, underlining again the need to continue to shift towards driving public health impact in every country in line with GPW 13. I think the DG has taken you through this story of the lab, and I'm not going to repeat it. I think his version is much more exciting than mine. But just to say, on the slide, you'll have some numbers regarding how laboratory capacity is being scaled up around the world. And clearly, it's not just about the reagents, it's about the training, it's about ensuring that the labs have the broader capacities to be able to do the testing. We continue to send technical support and missions throughout the world. This has really been a massive effort by the regions, by the regional platforms led by the regional directors and our regional emergency directors to deploy so many people into so many- in addition to the country presence in 150 countries, many countries needed extra- I think I've lost the presentation there. Many countries needed extra support, extra help, or had specific requests for IPC expertise, for surveillance expertise, for lab expertise. And our regional directors and Reds were able to shape that response and launched over 106 regional technical support missions. That's also been supplemented by GORN missions, EMT missions, which I'll speak about in a couple of minutes time. And again, the regional platforms have been absolutely vital in this response, given the global nature of the disease, given the function of the headquarters unit versus the relevance of the regional offices, their proximity to countries, their understanding of the country context. And I think our regional offices have really worked tirelessly, with less resources, than potentially they should have to be able to deal with such a complex issue. You've all heard, we're all discussing more and more the infodemic, that overload of often conflicting and wavered information, particularly prevalent on social media. There's a potential to cause great harm, but if we're smart in the public health community, we've also got the opportunity to work, to turn that tide and ensure that we make a difference in people's lives by getting them the best information possible. WHO has worked with more than 50 social media and technology companies to promote WHO's evidence-based information and limit the spread of misinformation and disinformation. We've also worked closely with the Under-Secretary General for Global Communications, Minister Fleming, on their Verified Campaign, an initiative to flood the digital space with verified facts amid the COVID-19 crisis. At the same time, the EpiWin platform that WHO manages seeks to promote healthy behaviors in the time of COVID-19 and to mitigate harm from misinformation and disinformation by giving everyone access to timely, accurate, and easy-to-understand advice and information from trusted sources. The platform works with faith-based organizations, employers and workers, the health sector, cities and governments, the travel and tourism sector, event organizers, and many, many other groups. The platform and its partners have produced a wealth of information, Mythbusters, fact-checkers, runs webinars and conferences specifically aimed at countering the flow of misinformation. We have to ensure that WHO is an authoritative voice on COVID-19, but a reliable one that resonates with individuals and communities everywhere. We're continuing to innovate to harness the power of new media and revolutionize the way we communicate public health messages to communities, at the same time minimizing the potential of these platforms to sow confusion and misinformation. Technology is opening up new avenues to engage with communities and to ensure that their views are reflected in the response. A major focus of the Global Risk Communication and Community Engagement Collective Service, which was launched by WHO, UNICEF, and IFRC with support from GORN and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, is to tap into social data, including community perceptions of and insights into the response and health messaging, to amplify the views of communities and enable them to influence decision-making. I mentioned earlier that the previous investments in country preparedness and our global assets are paying dividends. The Director General referred to this. The Open WHO Training Platform was created in 2017, and much of its basic infrastructure, its base of trainers, its capacity to process knowledge and guidelines into online training materials, you can see very, very small uptake in terms of training, but a massive explosion in enrollments in the first months of this year. And the system was ready to absorb that, and as the DG said, multiple languages and multiple, multiple courses delivered, and continues to expand. And as he said, this will form a launchpad for the WHO Academy as it moves forward. Again, you'll have heard of the Global Outbreak Alert and Response Network and the EMTs Initiative. Again, we thank you, our member states. It is your institutions, to a great extent, your expertise, that forms the basis and the core of these two very important platforms for global response. One focusing on networking for public health response, GORN, and the other EMTs focusing on clinical support around the world with emergency medical teams. You'll see the GORN partnership there in terms of the deployments around the world, and you'll also see in terms of EMTs. And again, the fact that we already had 100 international EMTs tested and certified by last year. They've done 50 international missions this year, despite also the need to be at home. They've managed to deploy internationally. But more importantly, I think, that 670 local new teams have been supported by EMTs and are being trained by local and national and international EMTs, thereby increasing the standardization and, in a sense, the scale up of our capacity to support each other with quality medical services across borders and within borders when time is needed. A lot of work has been done to fix the broken supply chain. A well-trained workforce is of no use if it lacks vital equipment and supplies to do the job. This was one of the defining features of the pandemic at the beginning, and it wasn't just delivery that was broken. Raw materials, procurement, manufacturing, distribution were all entirely disrupted. This is one of the most complex problems we've ever faced. And this was with complex biomedical equipment and other things that require validation, require adaptation, and just purchasing this alone is a very, very complex process. We saw that problem coming, and we took precedent into action with key partners. The Integrated COVID-19 Supply Chain System is unique in the history of outbreak response. The system marries the joint procurement and purchasing power of partners like WFP, UNICEF, of UNITA, of the Global Fund, and many, many others, to standardize technical specifications and help countries define needs through forecasting tools and the logistic experience of WFP, UNICEF, UNOPS, and others. The outcome has been a smoothing of major market distortions, the delivery of quality-assured supplies, and a consequent reduction in mortality that that can entail. And you'll see there the number of actual items that have been shipped by us, but there are much, much more in the system from other programs and other partners. And again, this has been done through collaboration with multiple institutions around the world, and that's just one example for you of scaling up case management capacity. It's not just about the materials, it's about adaptive technical guidelines, creating market access, doing health operations, and we would just pay a special thanks to the engineering and architectural companies around the world who have given us pro bono support in designing and working with countries to design and adapt health facilities for everything from patient triage to ventilation to patient flow and many other things. It's a new network called Techni, and it allows the engineering and architectural community to contribute to global health, to design services for health intervention. And again, obviously, the big procurement question that everyone was concerned about. The health cluster has been a major, an important- many of you out there will know how important the global health cluster is in protecting the vulnerable, particularly in countries affected by humanitarian crisis. We've worked with the agencies and IISC members to tailor the public health and social measures for preparedness and response in low-capacity and humanitarian settings. The health cluster serves 63 million people in 30 countries and is implementing the Global Humanitarian Response Plan to respond and preserve existing humanitarian health action and commitments, as well as COVID-19 response. In all of this, protecting essential health services across the world has been one of the biggest challenges for everyone, be it in no matter what the income range of the country. One clear and critical challenge was how to maintain those services through the worst of the pandemic. And in a recent survey carried out by our health systems colleagues at Post Survey, massive disruptions across the world were reported across a whole range of health services, both in terms of provision of services and demand for services and access to those services. Much is being done by the Health Systems Program in partnership with many of you to develop the technical and operational guidance documents on how to maintain those services and how to take practical action to maintain access to high-quality services during COVID. And more work will come in this space in the coming weeks and months. Speed and unity of purpose, there are two defining characteristics of the way global research and development have risen to the challenge of COVID-19. As I say, I'm making this intervention partly on behalf of myself, assuming, and also Bruce Elward, who manages the ACT Accelerator inside WHO. But I do believe if you put your mind back to February, when the Research and Development Blueprint, we convened a global meeting of experts to look at priorities for COVID-19 research. Importantly, the WHO R and D Blueprint had its genesis in West Africa during the Ebola response. It's been road-tested and refined in several outbreaks since, and it has revolutionized the way research and development has been conducted since the onset of this pandemic. As I said, it's the first week of February, we had the first multi-stakeholder meeting to identify research priorities, to identify gaps, and launch a roadmap for research priorities. This roadmap and the priorities across a whole range of areas, from therapeutics to vaccines to diagnostics, and a lot of these products, the product profiles, were already ready to be adapted, because they were the foundational work within the R and D Blueprint for Disease X. Many of you will have heard of Disease X. Much of the work that was used to prepare for Disease X was directly translated when the X could be replaced by SARS-CoV-2. And that advanced work, and that work with partners in advance, really allowed us to start, have a running start in the fight to build up the research needed. One of the great illustrations of the power of this broad approach has been illustrated by the Solidarity Trial. There are over 12,000 patients across 500 participating sites, and this has already changed clinical practice. It has ruled out several unsuccessful treatments, confirming that corticosteroids can be effective in patients with severe disease. There are also plans to take this platform foreign, Dr.? Assuming you may respond later and explain how we can apply potentially this platform when it comes to candidate vaccines down the line. In terms of the animal-human interface, as part of WHO's World Health Work, we work with FAO, OIE, and the United Nations Environment Program. We wish a guidance on how to reduce the risk of transmission of emerging zoonosis in traditional food markets, and will shortly publish further guidance on how to improve safety of traditional food markets. At the One Health Interface, we also work closely to shed light, working closely with FAO, OIE, to shed light on the source and intermediate host of this virus. And you will see there that we've worked very closely since the very beginning. This area of animal-human interface was raised at that meeting in February in research priorities. It was highlighted in the resolution, and WHO has worked very closely with Chinese authorities by sending an advance team to prepare for those studies. And a pre-mission, as I said, was launched in July. And the terms of reference was agreed there in terms of looking at the studies that have already been conducted, identifying gaps in knowledge, and developing the terms of reference for both short and long-term studies in two phases. And at the moment, WHO has prepared a list of candidates to join such an international mission from all around the world, both through direct contact with member states and a call for participation through the GORN network. And a list of candidates has been submitted to the Chinese authorities for their consideration and for next steps in order to deploy that team. I'm sure that you've all been deeply engaged over the last number of weeks on the ACT Accelerator. Bruce is here, and as are Mary Angela, I think, and Hanan, and others online, as well as Sumya. So all of the key players who've been driving this on our side and working so closely with this wonderful partnership, a bold structure, and it is driving unprecedented collaboration across the world. and it is driving unprecedented collaboration across the world. It has a critical path approach, and it really has accelerated these parallel work streams across this unique partnership in the hope of rapidly achieving something that probably was a pipe dream only a few months ago. It's achieved landmarks in its startup phase in diagnostics, vaccines, therapeutics, and inequitable allocation. But its main challenge right now, and I'm sure the DG has spoken to this clearly in his speech, is really around financial challenge, especially to scale up right now and then the longer-term costs of the rollout and access and distribution ultimately of vaccines. Finally, some things change and other things do not. The reality is that this is still an infectious disease. People are exposed. If they're exposed, they may be infected. If they're infected, they may die or have a severe illness, or they may transmit that disease onto somebody else. The basic circle of infection does not change. What changes in our knowledge and how and where that happens? The risk factors for that, and the measures we're willing to put in place to reduce exposure, to reduce infection, to reduce mortality, and to reduce transmission. Many other activities are needed to support that, including good governance, strong policy, coordination, financing, access to data, coordinated research, coherent strategies, and access to healthcare and access to the tools to fight the disease. In that sense, nothing has changed and everything has changed because we are now heading into a difficult period. The disease continues to spread. It is on the rise in many parts of the world, but we have learned lessons. In that sense, we need to consider the way forward. And in that sense, my final slide is to really, at this point, we need to look at how do we continue to prepare, empower, and respond to COVID-19 itself? How do we ensure equitable access to the tools to fight this disease? And how can we strengthen health systems at the same time, both in the short and medium term? All of this collectively with you, the Executive Board, and ourselves, is how can we adapt to ensure all of these activities are embedded within the core of the GPW-13? And how can we integrate those activities across the wider UN system to achieve the SDGs and other goals? That is both a scientific, it's a policy, and it is a political challenge going forward. I think that's it. I thank you all.
Thank you. The floor is now open for discussion. I will give the floor first to EB members in the EB room. I shall give the floor to Chile, to be followed by Germany. Chile, you can have the floor, please.
Muchas gracias, señor presidente.
Thank you, Chair. English friends. Chile is thankful that the special session was called and the special work carried out by the Secretariat to carry it out. For the first time, we're working in a hybrid setup. In the faces of this global crisis, we have taken ownership of local measures so as to address the challenge of COVID. As stipulated in last year's resolution, as a country, we've developed a multi-sectorial approach, which has been implemented progressively throughout the country, bearing in mind the development of the virus, and also looking to recommendations that would cover senior citizens as well as the more delicate individuals of our society. All of this was carried out in accordance with WHO recommendations and guidelines. Chile wants to thank WHO for its efforts to coordinate the response. Thus it is, we support also a COVAX mechanism, which integrates values such as solidarity, but also a broader strategy to address the demand and distribution of vaccines. In accordance with what is stated in the COVID Resolution, Chile has maintained its processes and information open towards WHO as is required by IHR. It has shared and spread the word regarding to its moves to respond to the challenge with countries in the region via the ProSor network, and we've also worked hand-in-hand with Paho. In the spirit of cooperation, Chile has called upon all countries to work together, and that is why it has developed a document that gathers ideas from many countries, and its major objective is to strengthen both preparation and response to the pandemic. We want to kick off a broad reflection on how we can strengthen our global health architecture. We believe that this initiative can contribute to the different measures that are being carried out by WHO and promote, together with efforts of other countries, a new version and understanding so that we can have better capacities to respond to a crisis of the scale of the one at hand, which has also had consequences at a socioeconomic level throughout the world. This document currently has the support of Bolivia, Ecuador, Peru, Uruguay, has been presented to the Director General of WHO, the IHR Review Committee, and to the Independent Panel for Pandemic Preparedness and Response. And we hope that its contents will serve as a foundation for further discussion in said mechanisms and that these discussions will be reflected in future reports and recommendations stemming from their publications. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Chile. Now Germany can have the floor, followed by Argentina. Germany, you can have the floor, please.
Thank you, Chair. DG colleagues, I speak on behalf of the EU and its member states. The candidate countries, the Republic of North Macedonia, Montenegro, and Albania, as well as the Republic of Moldova align themselves with this statement. We thank the Chair and the DG for having convened this special session of the Executive Board. We would also like to thank the member states for their active participation in the negotiations on Resolution World Health Assembly 73.1 and the cosponsors of the resolution. We are looking forward to continued updates on its implementation. We believe that the board needs to fulfill its constitutional role in the midst of this crisis to review progress in the implementation of the resolution and to provide its guidance and oversight of the work of the Secretariat. We welcome the DG's interim report and commend WHO for coordinating the UN health response, helping countries in managing the pandemic, creating the supply chain system, and fostering global solidarity. We also welcome progress made on investigating the origin of the virus in collaboration with FAO and OIE, including by launching multi-sectoral and scientific studies. It is key that the planned expert mission be deployed soon. The EU and its member states, as Team Europe, have acted upon request for action from member states by helping establish and acting as co-hosting the ACT Accelerator and by joining the COVAX facility to promote equitable and affordable access to COVID-19 diagnostics and therapeutics as well as vaccines diagnostics and therapeutics in line with the role of extensive immunization against COVID-19 as a global public good to ensure these tools can be properly deployed in countries the EU advocated for the inclusion of a health system strengthening connector. We have been and will be demonstrating global solidarity by scaling up funding to help contain the virus in the most fragile and vulnerable contexts, including in humanitarian settings. Evaluation, being an integral part of World Health Assembly 73.1, we are looking forward to hearing from the co-chairs of the IPPR as well as the chairs of the IHR Review Committee and the IOAC. We touch great importance to the outcome of these evaluations and hence expect final reports which are of the highest quality possible, fully independent, and based on scientific evidence. As a strong supporter of multilateralism, the EU's key strategic goal is to achieve the GPW and the 2030 Agenda objectives. While today we are focusing on the global response to COVID-19, we must not forget to deliver on the UHC and healthier population pillars. For when the next crisis strikes, we all need to be better prepared, and WHO must be enabled to fulfill its mandated role in global health security. Therefore, WHO should be further strengthened through political support, technical cooperation, and sustainable financing as the common responsibility of all member states for this organization. Accountability and compliance with the IHR, as well as tackling structural challenges, are key elements in this. On the question of necessary reforms in global pandemic preparedness, the EU stands ready to participate constructively in the overall discussion. The WHO is a member state-driven organization. Reforms will only be successful if they do not merely focus on how the Secretariat operates. Both the Secretariat and member states have parts to play. There are many proposals and contributions already on the table, including from member states from all regions and the WHO Secretariat. Neither should we forget the Preparedness Resolution adopted by the board in February and tabled for adoption by the World Health Assembly in November. Therefore, following this special session of the Executive Board, the EU would be honored to launch an inclusive process to discuss how best to bring these proposals together in close consultation with the evaluation and reform mechanisms. The aims would be, on the way forward, the 148th session of the Executive Board, to start building consensus among WHO member states on concrete steps to strengthen WHO's role in global health, emergency, preparedness, and response, especially those elements that can be achieved in the short term. I will come to an end now. We understand that we are all still in the midst of a crisis. Yet, if we learned one thing from the past, that is, it is that waiting for the crisis to pass often leads the world to shift from panic to neglect, resulting in reform proposals being left on paper and in drawers, never seeing the light of day. We cannot allow this to happen this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Germany. Now I give the floor to Argentina, to be followed by USA.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. DG colleagues. The impact of the COVID-19 pandemic has been strong in our countries, especially in Latin America. And time will pass before we fully understand its negative effects in terms of social, health, and economic matters, which have already been seen. Since the beginning, Argentina has intensified cooperation and collaboration at all levels. Globally, it has participated in the Solidarity Trial to seek effective treatment for the virus. It has supported initiatives such as the ACT Accelerator and the Call to Action, and it has transmitted its interest in terms of participating in the Solidarity Trial for vaccines. Recently, it's joined the COVAX mechanism as a concrete commitment to the fair and equitable distribution of vaccines for COVID-19 between countries and, on general terms, to universal and fair access to health technologies and products, including through the use of free-of-charge licenses or those which are affordable. In terms of development of vaccines, Argentina has been participating in clinical trials for three candidate vaccines in Phase III, and an Argentinian laboratory will participate in the production for Latin American countries of one of the most advanced vaccines. At a national level, early measures adopted in cooperation with the various jurisdictions allowed us to strengthen prevention capacities as well as detection and response for the health system. A comprehensive response was established, which included social protection measures and specific gender measures. Also increased production of critical supplies such as mechanical respirators. And part of the textile industry was converted to enable them to produce PPE. And some of this material has also been exported to the region. Furthermore, thanks to the cooperation between the Argentinian scientific system and the private sector, important developments have been promoted, such as a test for simplified molecular detection. This pandemic has shown the importance of the role of the WHO in coordinating the response to the emergency and in providing technical assistance, guidelines, and information based on the latest scientific evidence available to member states, to health staff, and to the population in general. Finally, aware of the challenges that still arise before us with regard to this crisis, we tolerate Argentina's commitment to global solidarity, and we would call for the collective responsibility of the international community to overcome this pandemic and to address our weaknesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Argentina. Now I give the floor to USA, to be followed by Australia.
Thank you, Chair. For the US intervention, I would ask that the floor be opened for my virtual member, Admiral Girard, please. Thank you.
...for us commissioned for, thousands of whom are deployed upon the United States, serving in this crisis. I also lead US domestic, public health, and general prevention policies, including a new initiative for sickle cell disease, where we formed the United States Interagency Task Force with the goal of normalizing the lives and life stance for Americans with sickle cell disease within 10 years and supporting global efforts to save lives of those living with sickle cell around the world, particularly in Sub-Saharan Africa. We cannot... ...in 1918 and the other public health efforts. There are too many lives at stake. After the 1918 influenza pandemic, our public health predecessors pledged that such a public emergency would never happen again. And despite the many advances in technology, international cooperation, instantaneous communication since, and the positive steps in the response outlined this morning by Dr. Ryan, we cannot overcome the failure of any member state to provide accurate, complete, and timely information on outbreaks and potential health emergencies as well as the NIH honors. Consistent with our longstanding policy, the United States will continue promoting reforms that strengthen transparency and accountability at every international organization, including the WHO. The United States, working closely with G7 partners, developed a roadmap for WHO reform, which I shared with my fellow Executive Board members in August. The roadmap outlines opportunities to strengthen the WHO by increasing its accountability, transparency, and overall effectiveness, as well as promoting our shared accountability to one and up to address new and emerging threats. Germany and France jointly provided a paper also along these lines, and we understand Chile also has recommendations. We all share the same goal of reforming the WHO, fighting COVID-19, and defeating future outbreaks. The US welcomes all good faith efforts to strengthen public health protections, and we hope we can use this special session to begin converting these many good ideas into actions. Mr. Chairman, let me conclude with Resolution WHOA 73.1, which encapsulates the views of all member states and directs the DG to provide a fair and full accounting of the COVID-19 outbreak and responses. A key mandate from WHOA 73.1 is the mission WHO, FAO, and OIE are leading to identify the zoonotic source of the virus and the route of the... This work with... ...by all members. It is critical... ...they receive... ...and timely... ...including the... ...for this path... ...the process... ...be confident in the... ...the United States... Finally, I would... ...support the... ...intervention... ...through a day... ...or convening of... ...board members... ...active... ...training role... ...board... ...posed... ...in the overall... Only by having the Executive Board can we increase the transparency, accountability, and effectiveness of the entire organization. Thank you very much.
Thank you, USA. Now I give the floor to Australia, to be followed by Austria.
Thank you, Chair. Australia acknowledges the efforts of the WHO in containing the spread of the virus. We particularly commend the Division of Pacific Technical Support in SUVA, which has been leading a coordinated response among partners to strengthen capabilities in the Indo-Pacific region. COVID-19 is putting great pressure on health systems, societies, and economies. While coordinating response efforts, we must also ensure that the focus on COVID-19 does not allow an increase in other health risks. We need strong health systems that support healthcare workers, address the health needs of the most vulnerable, including indigenous and older persons, and ensure access to high-quality services, including those focused on non-communicable diseases and palliative care. WHO's support for the continued safe functioning of health systems is of fundamental importance. We recognize the critical work of the WHO Health Emergencies Programme, but know with concern that up to 30% of critical positions are not currently filled. It is crucial that WHO's health emergency functions are sustainably financed and have a skilled workforce. We acknowledge the efforts to date to raise funds to respond to COVID-19. However, we need a more sustainable and coordinated global approach to funding for the health emergency response. The ACT Accelerator is a major endeavor, and we welcome WHO's efforts. and we welcome WHO's efforts to develop a global framework so that vaccines and therapeutics are allocated fairly. Australia is proud to join the COVAX facility. Our contribution to the advanced market commitment will support equitable access to safe, effective and affordable vaccines for all countries. We strongly encourage the tripartite to collaborate closely to identify the zoonotic source of the virus and reduce the risk of emerging zoonosis. Transparency around this work is critical. We are keen to see further information on the membership of the international team and its program of work. We call for the tripartite to ensure that its guidance appropriately reduces the risk of pandemics from human and wildlife interactions. We must maintain momentum in our collective efforts to respond to COVID-19. We consider it essential that WHO is as open as possible to work. In recognition of our obligations to provide high quality care and access to services, as agreed under the COVID-19 Response Resolution, we have also submitted a written statement to outline key features of our domestic... Thank you.
Thank you, Australia. Now I give the floor to Austria, to be followed by Romania.
Thank you, Chair. Austria aligns itself with the Statement of the European Union and its member states. We thank the Director General for the interim report on the implementation of the resolution of the World Health Assembly. The adoption of the COVID-19 Response Resolution by the World Health Assembly early this year was a powerful and reassuring message to focus all our efforts on combating the common enemy and of our determination to overcome existing barriers. It was exactly the right moment for responding in a strong and timely manner to the acute crisis. Given the current pandemic, we know that an objective evaluation is key for future actions. Due to its constitutional function and member state's ownership, the Executive Board as governing body has a vital role in giving its guidance to the evolution process. Austria therefore welcomes your decision to finally hold this special session of the EB and to carry on this work from here on. We highly appreciate the presence of the IPPR co-chairs tomorrow and look forward to their briefing and their constructive dialogue with the Executive Board. Ensuring transparency and involvement in the development and implementation of the evaluation is essential, and all member states should have the opportunity to share their valuable contributions to the process now and in the future. Austria also welcomes that the weekly virtual Member States Information Session and COVID-19 schedule every Thursday have increasingly been used for discussions and essential topics. Praise and thanks again to the WHO Regional Director, Dr. Kluge, and his team for the exclusive progress, process, transparent information sharing and excellent communication with member states during this health crisis. Austria values the actions of the WHO Euro Regional Office as a best practice in crisis management. In addition to the health crisis, we are also facing a weakening of the organization. This political weakening is further reinforced by the potential withdrawal of a strong WHO member state from the organization, which means a serious loss of organizational sources. We have noted that both and European as well as the global task force were looking into the financial consequences of the gap in funding caused by this withdrawal. Can you already share with us your findings and possible recommendations of this task force? I fully heartedly will always defend the good and early reaction of WHO and you, Dr. Tedros, in February when it comes to this pandemic crisis. I would like to express my gratitude to this. Whoever stays different is far off the facts and believes in fake conspiracy. But let me also express concerns on some other issues. How are we progressing on the matter of the global public good of vaccines and the action taken by the responsible UN agencies when it comes to intellectual property? This will be a key to enhance production capacities globally. I'm also concerned when it comes to some managerial capacities of GAVI when it comes to the global access to vaccines. Or, why is it that there is no global leadership when it comes to the many aspects of travel regimes and restriction? This is hurting the commerce and the travel industry in many, many aspects. Or, we have no proper guidance, governance of this valuable organization. Dr. Tedros, you did an extraordinary job when it comes to information, but information is not a substitute to consultation with the governing bodies. Maybe we could have been more precise when meeting the demands and needs of the people around the world. But we have started to changing the paradigm of our work when it comes to COVID-19, from COVID crisis management to managing the crisis. We have to learn how to live with it. A second global economic shutdown is impossible, but we are making progress on this, and I am very grateful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Austria. Now I give the floor to Romania, to be followed by Russian Federation. Romania, you can have the floor, please.
Thank you, Director General, excellences, dear colleagues. Romania fully aligns itself with the UN member states' statement delivered by Germany. I would like to thank the Director General for calling this reunion. I think that this special session of the EB is essential to ensure the consolidated action of our organization through a strong input from the member states to show our common commitment to counter COVID-19 together through cooperation and solidarity. I would also like to convene our appreciation for the comprehensive reports the Director General and Executive Director have presented in line with the COVID-19 Response Resolution adopted by the World Health Organization in May this year. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to briefly share with you that Romania's national containment strategy has used a comprehensive approach in order to limit the spread of virus. Improved communication and resilience of our health system have been the key to address the COVID-19 and to maintain the safe provision of the essential public health functions and services. We have constantly increased our testing capacity and our intensive care unit capabilities. The control shift over the transmission has allowed us to gradually lift the restrictive measures in summer, and we have learned to live with the coronavirus and the strict condition and constant monitoring, but also to deal with some resurgence of the outbreak. We are aware that we need to prepare for challenges to come. We have to evaluate the measures put in place in order to capitalize on what has worked and to improve or change the parts that failed. And most important of all, we have to learn from the experience we have gained. From this perspective, we consider the newly appointed Independent Panel on Pandemic Preparedness and Response of the utmost importance, more so from the perspective of the purpose of its activity through seeking, distilling lessons learned and making recommendation for how collectively the world can be better prepared to respond to this pandemic and to any future one. The independent panels work in cooperation with the IHR Review Committee, the Global Preparedness Monitoring Board and the Independent Oversight and Advisory Committee, will contribute to increase of our preparedness and capacity of response to these diseases. EB as governing body should effectively participate in decisions aimed to evaluate the response of WHO during this pandemic. Real consultation with member state and transparency of dialogue are essential in enforcement of credibility of WHO's leading UN agency in fighting COVID-19. Bringing all at the same table cooperation and exchange of information are the key issues in controlling SARS-CoV-2 pandemic. Finally, my country will continue to contribute to the international solidarity efforts in ensuring universal access to safe and effective vaccine against COVID-19, as we have pledged through ACT Accelerator Initiative and through Team Europe to COVAX Facility. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Romania. Now I give the floor to Russian Federation, to be followed by Burkina Faso. Russian Federation, you can have the floor, please.
Thank you, Chair. I would ask to give the floor to the Vice Minister of Health, who is participating via video conference. So, would you please ensure that this can happen? Thank you very much.
Уважаемый господин председатель, уважаемый генеральный директор, уважаемый...
Director General.
Выражая признательность генеральному директору...
Gratitude.
Мы придаем большое значение выполнению резолюции 73 сессии...
Resolution WHO.
...определившей приоритетные направления работы на всех уровнях по реагированию на пандемию...
...на вирусные инфекции. Response.
Которая стала серьезным испытанием для систем здравоохранения.
Which is a real test for all healthcare systems.
Четкомасштабная эмбезиация COVID-19 в целях предотвращения, сдерживания и прекращения передачи инфекции признана вас глобальным общественным благом для здоровья. В связи с этим подчеркиваю важность обеспечения всеобщего двевременного и равноправного...
Timely and equitable access to safe, quality and efficacious...
...необходимым для борьбы с COVID-19.
...which is necessary to combat COVID-19.
Призываем безотлагательному устранению неоправданных препятствий для такого досуга.
On getting rid of all...
Отмечаем ключевую роль ВОЗ как координатора международных усилий в борьбе с COVID-19.
And we recognize the...
...последнюю трепль организации в качестве лидера международного сотрудничества.
Because it is a leader of global cooperation in the area of healthcare.
Такого оцениваем.
We highly value...
Приняты его комплексные меры по противодействию...
The comprehensive measures undertaken by WHO to combat the pandemic. We believe that the organization has acted professionally and in a timely manner.
Удовлетворением отмечаем...
We note the satisfaction, the progress...
...в осуществлении стратегического плана ВОЗ.
Implementing strategic WHO plans.
...по ускоренному доступу к инструментам для борьбы с COVID-19.
To ensure preparedness and response.
Заложенный в план механизма координации усилий по борьбе с COVID-19.
Mechanisms to coordinate efforts to combat this pandemic.
...в основе соответствующих международных проектов.
As a result of which, we have a foundation for...
Приветствуем ряд запущенных и координированных ВОЗ инициатив.
Initiatives.
...признаны консолидировать международное усилие в борьбе с инфекцией.
Consolidate international efforts to combat this infection.
Отмечаем проект солидарности и инициативу по ускоренному доступу к инструментам для борьбы с COVID-19.
...to instruments to combat this pandemic.
Считаем несостоятельными предъявляемые рядом государств претензии в адрес ВОЗ, включая безочередные и недопустимые обвинения преднамеренных сотрудничества.
So, we should be questioning the efforts of the WHO.
Выступаем решительно против политизации международного сотрудничества в сфере здравоохранения.
Of international solidarity in the area of healthcare.
Направленные на ослабление роли ВОЗ.
Destruitive steps that have been taken to undermine WHO is something that...
...многосторонним усилиям по борьбе с пандемией.
...and harm international efforts to combat this pandemic.
...соответствующие оценкам. Исполкому и Сомбле здравоохранения необходимо тщательно проанализировать...
We need to really analyze the legal procedures and administrative and financial...
...прекращение членства Соединенных Штатов Америки ВОЗ.
Regarding the steps that have been taken by the United States of America...
Российская Федерация с первых дней пандемии оказывала бесумную финансовую экспертную поддержку.
Has provided financial support to the WHO.
Наша страна обладает уникальным опытом эффективного противодействия распространению COVID-19. Четко выстроена система мероприятий, позволила не допустить взрывного развития эпидемии в России.
That we are observing.
И действовали на опережение, опираясь на исследования российских специалистов.
On a process that is based on research and specialists.
Помимо комплекса мер, направленного на контроль санитарно-эпидемологической обстановки и мобилизацию системы здравоохранения, был разработан и зарегистрирован ряд инновационных и газовых препаратов.
Also, the series of innovative...
Первое в мире российское вакцина...
The first vaccine in the world to...
...которая формирует устойчивый антительный и клеточный инфективный вирус. ...возбудителю COVID-19. Российская Федерация...
The Russian Federation.
...вдала в ВОЗ запрос на включение Спутник ВИ, перечень препаратов, запущенных в использовании в случае чайной ситуации. Уважаемый господин председатель, резолюция Вас предусматривает проведение комплексной независимой и беспристрастной оценки международных мироагирования на COVID-19.
Measures to...
Генерального директора ВОЗ представит страну WHO...
We asked the Director General of WHO to provide...
...план проведения такой оценки, включая предложения по процедурным аспектам...
Including proposals and legalities.
...и обладления...
And issues of legalities. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Russian Federation. Now I give the floor to Burkina Faso, to be followed by Oman.
Thank you very much, Chair. Burkina Faso is honored to make a statement on behalf of the forty-seven member states of the African region of the WHO. The member states of the African region of the WHO would like to warmly thank the Director General for the quality of his report. In fact, this report gives an update on the achievements of the WHO as part of the implementation of Resolution WHOA 73.1 and also highlights the main challenges and lessons learned in terms of the COVID-19 response. The African region commends the Director General and the entire WHO institution for its leadership in coordinating the global response to the pandemic of COVID-19 and particularly for having united and involved all relevant stakeholders through a number of platforms and mechanisms to manage this unprecedented global health crisis. Thus, the implementation of platforms, such as the Platform of Partners to Combat COVID-19, has allowed African countries to benefit from technical and financial assistance in order to support different preparedness and response national plans as regards COVID-19. The support of the WHO has allowed all countries in the African region to have at their disposal and/or strengthen laboratories that are capable of detecting COVID-19. And this goes for practically all of the countries in the region. And we encourage WHO to continue and strengthen its support to member states in order to significantly increase their capacities as part of the implementation of recommendations of the IHR, particularly at a national level. This pandemic once again has demonstrated, if further proof was needed, the importance of the one health concept, and we encourage the WHO in its collaborative work with all relevant stakeholders. Given the devastating effects at an economic and developmental level and in particular for countries with limited resources and with poorly resilient health systems facing this global health emergency, we would also like to stress the importance of operational directors of WHO on maintaining essential health services. These are directors which have allowed us at an African level to continue important health programs, particularly as part of efforts to ensure UHC. And this is in line with the objectives to implement the African Health Strategy 2016 to 2030. The pandemic has revealed the necessity to strengthen all health system pillars and this has also revealed the importance of building a health system with sufficient resources and adequate funding. This approach is the only long-term and sustainable one, and this is why we urge an increase in investment in health systems of member states, an increase in developmental assistance and strengthened international cooperation for mobilizing resources. We encourage and support compliance with international treaties allowing for strengthened international cooperation and collaboration, both North-South and South-South, for the transfer of intellectual property and technology for the manufacturing of... and technology for the manufacturing of all products and equipment to combat COVID-19. Once available, we insist that these products must be distributed equitably and transparently without leaving anyone behind. To conclude, Chair, the COVID-19 pandemic has highlighted flagrant inequalities between developed countries and developing countries, but also inequalities within countries themselves. These inequalities have negative consequences on our health, societies and economies. This is why countries must be assisted. The WHO and relevant institutions must advocate for the support of economies in difficulty, particularly through debt-waving mechanisms. And to conclude, Member States of the African Group call for continued global solidarity and for supporting the WHO as the main United Nations agency in the coordination of this global crisis and we reaffirm the importance of ensuring the full implementation of all provisions in Resolution WHO 73.1. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Burkina Faso. Now I give the floor to Oman to be followed by China.
Thank you very much, Your Excellency. Excellencies, colleagues, ladies and gentlemen. It gives me great pleasure to speak to you on behalf of my colleagues in the Eastern Mediterranean region. As COVID-19 continues to rage across the Eastern Mediterranean region, governments are working at full speed to contain the pandemic in their countries. In addition to the public health risk that the virus presents, we are also understandably concerned about the economic, social and political cost of this pandemic. Many countries in the region had earlier implemented measures that resulted in successful containment of the virus and a steady decline in the cases. But of course, it is to be expected that as social measures such as lockdowns are lifted, cases will increase. But we have to relax these measures in a way that is informed by evidence and that mitigates the public health impact. Other factors contributing to the rise in number of cases and that we need to directly and aggressively address, these include COVID fatigue among communities and misinformation that are limiting the uptake of personal protective measures such as mask-wearing and physical distancing. They also include our slow progress at scaling up essential public health measures such as testing and contact tracing. More technical support is required from WHO to scale up testing capacity, especially in countries affected by complex emergencies and there are many of them in our region. These countries also require more resources from WHO to implement response activities, including support for rapid response team and provision of supplies. Health workers everywhere are our most valuable assets and we emphasize the need to protect them as they manage both COVID-19 and other conditions. Ladies and gentlemen, the search for safe and effective vaccine continues and there are seven countries in our region engaged in phase-three trials. We need to ensure fair and equitable distribution of the vaccine to all health workers and to all countries in the region, especially those with greater number of vulnerable populations exposed to famine, natural disasters, political conflicts and other disease outbreaks. They have already suffered enough. Many people in our countries are also bearing the brunt of disrupted essential health services as resources are diverted to battling COVID-19. We urge WHO to ensure support to sustain the continuity of essential health services and reduce the impact of the pandemic on our population. Countries in the Eastern Mediterranean region have shown great dedication and collaboration in addressing this pandemic. Though the last few months have been challenging, we cannot relax our efforts now. We need to persist in our fight against this pandemic and we need to ensure our people get all the essential health services they need. We know that. We know that no one country can combat this pandemic alone, nor can one country end it alone. We reiterate our commitment to working together as one force, putting political and other differences aside and using our common goal of the health of our populations as a bridge to sustainable peace during this critical time. And as Dr. Tedros, the Director General of WHO, whom I admire his leadership, keeps repeating, none of us is safe unless and until all of us say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Oman. Now I give the floor to China to be followed by Sudan. China, you can have the floor, please.
谢谢主席. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Chinese delegation would like to thank the Secretariat for the report on the updates on implementation of Resolution WHO 73.1 on the COVID-19 response and the report on the global situation. We appreciate the Secretariat's response in accordance with the requirements of the Resolution and rapid formulation of the work and strategic preparedness and response plan in terms of information collection, guidelines, development, financing and advocacy, assisting member states to take effective measures to respond to the pandemic. We welcome WHO and the UN and various multilateral organizations to work together to strengthen overall cooperation and coordination and promote synergy. We applaud WHO for supporting countries in improving IHR core capabilities and taking measures to support countries to respond to COVID-19 by continuing to provide basic health services and promote UHC. We appreciate WHO's support to countries in need with platforms such as GONE and EMT Networks. We call upon all parties to jointly support WHO's efforts to develop standardized products and technical guidelines to respond to COVID-19 and its work in combating misinformation, false information and malicious activities on the internet. China has always been transparent and responsible to fulfill our international responsibilities. We support WHO in fulfilling its responsibilities, implementing Resolution WHO 73.1, providing financial support to WHO, maintaining close communication with all levels of the organization and establishing a technical communication mechanism, receiving visits by WHO experts. Prevention and control and scientific cooperation in virus traceability and other in-depth exchanges have been carried out. Currently, the global situation of the pandemic is worrying. The northern hemisphere is about to enter a season of high incidence of respiratory diseases, which will bring greater challenges to the prevention and control. We call upon all parties to continue to support WHO in playing a leading role in the fight against the pandemic. Unite and strengthen our cooperation, work together to meet the challenges and jointly build a human health community. Thank you.
Thank you, China. Now I give the floor to Sudan to be followed by Israel.
Honorable Chair, distinguished colleagues, excellencies, Sudan welcomes the updates on Resolution World Health Assembly 73.1 by the Secretary and commands WHO for the great effort in catalyzing the global response to the COVID-19 pandemic. With an increasing number of cases verified, the pandemic has created double burden on Sudan capacity to sustain its standard function as well as the COVID-19 response. The disruption of routine services clearly exhibited, particularly during the initial phase of the pandemic, directly resulted in the stagnation of timely detection of reported volume cases, which inevitably led to declaration of the current volume outbreak in Sudan. The disruption in the routine services during the COVID pandemic, especially in a fragile health system, has impacted the closure of most of the immunization sites during the first two months, which eventually resulted in the drop of recovery of the routine immunization by eleven percent compared with the second quarter in 2019. To that, we urge WHO to take prominent steps in supporting Sudan in controlling the current volume outbreak as well as provision strategic support on strengthening the RMNCAH surfaces. The additional implication of the COVID-19 pandemic is the fatigue, emergency preparedness and response system, which has rendered Sudan's health system increasingly vulnerable to multiple outbreaks. This has been clearly demonstrated during the recent unprecedented floods, which initiated the declaration of national state of emergency, resulting in over one hundred deaths and displacement of thousands, in addition to providing suitable environment for vector-borne diseases and outbreak of febrile illness. We call on increased global solidarity and support to combat this to severe effects of floods in Sudan and further support in strategizing roadmap to mitigate and recover both COVID pandemic. Sudan acknowledges all effort made by WHO in ensuring accelerated vaccine development through the COVAX pillar and especially through the amplification of efforts by GAVI WHO to us. It is centrality of solidarity to the COVAX pillar that makes the added value which requires addressing the inquiries and contextual sensitivities of each member state. Sudan comments WHO role in assuring effective regulation and optimum allocation through the COVAX facility and Sudan calls WHO for further support and augmentation. Deep care, Sudan's health workforce domain has been facing tremendous challenges for years, which were clearly highlighted during this year consecutive years consecutive health crisis and as main factors affecting the appropriate country's response. Sudan calls on WHO at the three levels of the organization to support effort in the following areas: leading policy dialogue for the health workforce to build developed concept strategies and mechanism to strengthen, to coordinate, the coordination, build the health workforce management system, building the right health workforce capacities in regard to the country's specific context to strengthen the response to the emergency rosters of target capacity. Developing policies to that support the health workforce, ensuring decent web psychosocial support and women empowerment. Sudan acknowledges the needs to shift focus to public health interventions from response and rather strengthening preparedness by reinforcing the capacities and mobilizing to proper resources to provide support to developing countries in accordance with the commitment made through the Sustainable Development Goals. The consequences of the health crisis saddling the country and deeply affecting its people have taken a particular toll in progressing the efforts made to sustain development and deliver integrated primary health care with a special focus on universal healthcare. Sudan rewrites its commitment in fighting the pandemic and reversing the consequences exhibited not in the WHO consistent support throughout. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Sudan. Now I give the floor to Israel to be followed by Bangladesh. Israel, you can have the floor, please.
Thank you very much. My national statement will be given by our Dr. Itamar Goto from Jerusalem. If you can please open the mic for him.
Yes, it's opened already. Thank you. Thank you, Chairperson, Director General, Dr. Tedros, distinguished colleagues. We wish to thank the Director General and the Secretariat for organizing this special session. We also appreciate the weekly member state briefings, which we found informative. We are also thankful for the presence of our colleagues in Geneva and around the world, meeting while many of us are still at the midst of a long battle against COVID-19. Serves as a testament for our shared commitment to ensuring global hands through multilateralism and solidarity. In the same spirit, we are proud to participate in the COVAX facility, joined convention by GAVI, CEP and the WHO. We strongly support the goal of ensuring fair and equitable access to COVID-19 vaccines, which is based on strong practical and moral basis. This initiative is a first of its kind and will set a precedent for future pandemics. May they never come. We should thus build this framework together and ensure that all participants agree, both in process and retrospect, that the facility operate in a fair, comprehensive, efficient and timely manner. We take this opportunity to extend our deepest appreciation to frontline workers around the world, including medical teams who work tirelessly and out of a deep sense of devotion and commitment to assuring that all of us are safe. Chairperson, we, member states and the whole world, turn their eyes to the WHO for guidance and leadership. The WHO's performance relies heavily on the ability to adapt to fast-changing reality. In this regard, we wish to stress two points. Firstly, an independent evaluation process is a source for strength and a precondition for assuring accountability. The ongoing work of the IOSAC and IPPR and the IHR Committee serves as an important basis for improvement. In this context, it is crucial to avoid duplication between the work of these bodies and assure efficiency. Secondly, guidance and input from member states is another source of strength. While the WHO 73.1 Resolution on COVID-19 Response reflects member states' priorities and future steps, fast development demands more frequent opportunities for inclusive consultations and input from the member states. We ask the Office that the Office will facilitate, dedicate discussion and the WHO allocation framework and future direction for strengthening the WHO reform. We look forward to receive updates from the co-chairs of the Independent Panel for Pandemic Preparedness and Response, the Chair of the IHR Review Committee and the Chair of the Independent Oversight and Advisory Committee for WHO Health Emergency Program. I thank you for your attention and wish all of you, my esteemed colleagues, health during these times. Thank you.
Thank you, Israel. Now I give the floor to Bangladesh to be followed by Botswana. Bangladesh, you can have the floor, please.
Mr. Chair, His Excellency Permanent Representative Bangladesh will deliver the statement. He has connected with us through our chat platform. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, down sir, I would like to congratulate you on your election as the Chair of the IUD. I would talk to Director General for calling for this special session, the team initiative by WHO to take stock of the processes made so far in response and a possible way forward. Mr. Chair, since the inception pandemic, the government of Bangladesh under the leadership of Prime Minister Shek Rasyidah has been weak on. The government has issued thirty-one point directives to mitigate the impact of the pandemic. It has mobilized kits, gloves, masks, PPEs to protect the health workers. Our National Purpose and Response Plan for COVID-19 reflected a whole of the government's approach to tackle this pandemic. Government has also collected around thirteen point two five billion dollars to contribute to four percent of GDP for recovery from this crisis. We have also included one point one million We have also included one one million rupees that we are hosting in all our interventions. Mr. Chair, the whole world is waiting for COVID-19 vaccines. Like to thank Gwito, Sepi, and Kar for launching the COVAX facility initiative. My special thanks go to GAVI for the initiative on the COVAX AMC in order to help the lower and middle income economies towards ensuring fair and equitable access to COVID-19 vaccines. Particularly, Bangladesh has earned international recognition in producing COVID vaccines. If we are provided with the technological know-how and our pharmaceutical industry can use COVID-19 vaccine in mass scale, we look forward to having such opportunity. Mr. Chair, I wish to make following four points. First, WHO should continue to advocate for ensuring equitable and affordable access to medicines and vaccines for COVID-19. Second, pandemic has exposed the gaps in our efforts to build a robust global health system. There must be stronger international partnership to meet the needs of lower countries through timely and adequate development as well as humanitarian assistance. Third, we request WHO to assist the effect of COVID-19 on mental health, assist the member states to mitigate the negative differences in this respect. Finally, and the pandemic should not divert attention and resources away from our long-term development needs in achieving the twenty thirty agenda. We must prioritize universal health coverage and improved nutrition for all. I thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Bangladesh. Now I give the floor to Botswana, to be followed by Ghana. Botswana, you can have the floor, please.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. May I request that the Minister of Botswana, the Honorable Lamahabu Watbe, take his international statement online. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair. Allow me to first and foremost commend you for convening this special session of the COVID-19 response, particularly as we see a second wave of infection spreading across some countries.
We just received this consignment from WHO and the Jack Ma Foundation as a donation to the Kenyan government. It's coming at the right time.
Something amazing happens when astronauts see Earth from space for the first time. It changes their perspective on everything. It's called the overview effect. It makes them realize that although we all come from different countries and speak different languages, we're all just passengers on the small blue ball. It's a reminder that none of us are alone and we're all part of a global family. We want the same for our communities and ourselves, a safe and prosperous world. COVID-19 has had a devastating impact. The pandemic has been a cruel reminder that in an interconnected world, what affects one of us can affect all of us. Fighting COVID-19 requires a team effort on an unprecedented scale. Right now, nations, health organizations, and communities are all coming together to defeat this virus. The Access to COVID-19 Tools Accelerator is the world's biggest coalition of partners fighting COVID-19, dedicated to saving lives and suppressing the effects of the pandemic, uniting to accelerate the development and production of COVID-19 tests and treatments. And when vaccines become available, the ACT Accelerator will ensure all countries have access at the same time. Together, we can save lives and start the recovery our world needs. The overview effect reminds us of what we can achieve when we work together, when we use science for the good of all. So let's act and beat COVID-19 together.
I'll give the floor to Ghana, to be followed by United Kingdom. Ghana, you can have the floor straight away.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Honorable Minister for Health will deliver the statement of Ghana. He is with the meeting on the virtual platform. You kindly activate his mic.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The delegation of Ghana alliance itself with a statement made by Wukina Faso on behalf of the forty-seven African member states and wishes to thank the Director General and his staff for an excellent report. We support the DG's call to all state parties to take actions according to the provisions of the International Health Regulations and welcome the support received from the WHO in developing and implementing Ghana's COVID-19 Response Plan and in the further strengthening of our national IHR core capacities. Mr. Chair, in the spirit of unity and solidarity, my delegation welcomes various initiatives designed to contain and control the COVID-19 pandemic, especially the WHO's access to COVID-19 ACT Accelerator Initiative. We call on member states, especially developing countries, to sign up for the initiative and assist the WHO perform its role of facilitating and coordinating the consequently comprehensive global response to the COVID-19 pandemic. On the national response to the pandemic, the government of Ghana has adopted a clear communication strategy to provide information, reliable, and comprehensive information on COVID-19. The strategy includes measures to counter misinformation and disinformation as well as malicious cyber activities in line with paragraph six of Resolution WHO eighty-seven three dot one. The strategy also entails regular addresses to the nation by the president on measures taken: one, to limit and stop the importation of the virus; two, contain the spread of the virus; and three, provide adequate care for patients with the virus; four, limit the social and economic impacts of the virus; and five, expand domestic capability and deepen Ghana's self-lives. To realize objectives about, the government should be following measures: stepwise lockdown accompanied by tests and treatment, adapting health facilities and incentivizing health workers, financial measures and socioeconomic welfare protection, launch of COVID-19 allegations fund to raise funds for the response, including supporting businesses and other social interventions, absorbing the water logistics details for population, ten percent for the very poor and fifty percent for all others, including residents, making all testing and treatment of COVID-19 completely free. Government is also undertaking the following measures to control the spread of the virus going forward: ramping up the capacity and scope of contact tracing, testing, and routine surveillance, easing restrictions slowly in a stepwise manner with close monitoring, establishing more test labs to cope with the growing demand for COVID-19 testing and sanitizing public spaces and effectively implementing public health measures, social distancing and mask wearing among our citizens. I thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Ghana. Now I give the floor to United Kingdom, followed by Tunisia.
Thank you, Chair. The UK continues to drive new WHO and their crucial leadership, and it is playing it a difficult part. Our Prime Minister announced the UNGA that the UK will give three hundred and forty million pounds in core voluntary contributions for the next four years in addition to our assessed and other contributions. This is both an incremental substantial shift to more flexible funding, of which thirty percent will be linked to progressive support, including implementing measures to further improve pandemic preparedness and response. We call on others that simply increase their support for WHO at this time. Strengthening global preparedness is crucially a shared endeavor which WHO delivers responsibilities mandated by member states. We must ensure their obligations to prevent, detect, and respond on such matters. At the launch of the IPPR, DG, you laid the groundwork for such a successful steps to achieving, and wish we could agree to this now in the Independent Panel's report. These include the Intermediate Public Health Alert Universal Periodic Review. We would like to hear today about how the advances have been made and how member states can support these efforts. Another key step in improving the response to this virus and that outbreak is a shared understanding of it. We thank WHO for their update on the subject exploration of this question, call for this to be prioritized as member states are provided with regular updates. Effective vaccine, its therapeutics and diagnostics are what's so essential to bringing the pandemic under control as soon as possible. The UK remains strongly committed to equitable availability of vaccines. That is why we are supporting COVAX, including a contribution of up to five hundred and seventy-one million pounds, of which five hundred billion will directly support vaccines for developing countries. As member states, we have made difficult decisions balancing the trade-offs between economic, societal, and public health health plans. It is considered some of the pandemic's most significant challenges will be the reversal of hard-fought progress in other areas of global health. We know that WHO also faces difficult systems and trade-offs and continues to work tirelessly to tackle the plethora of other global health issues that don't stop just because we declare economic problems. Many member states are struggling to maintain health services, even preventative services, alongside managing the impact of COVID-19. We would like to see WHO taking a lead in analysis and support on how to maintain delivery these essential services and would welcome an update here on what action WHO will be taking over the next stages of the pandemic on this. Finally, like others, we were shocked to hear the recent allegations of sexual exploitation and abuse against WHO and other organizations fighting Ebola in DRC. We welcome the DG's commitment to investigate and to ensure WHO's safeguarding systems are fully effective. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, UK. Now I give the floor to Tunisia, to be followed by Republic of Korea.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chair. Thank you very much indeed for your introductory comments, and I would like at this stage to commend you on the able way you are guiding our discussion here. Having said that, we wish to support the statement made by Oman on behalf of Emre. There are a number of points we would like to make, however, in our national capacity. Thanks are due to Dr. Tedros, our Director General, for all of the information he provided at the beginning of this morning's meeting. And we thank him in particular for the preliminary report on implementation of Resolution WHO seventy-three one. We really would like to congratulate him on all of the work being done as part of COVID-19 response. A coordinated response has been developed by WHO, and that's something we're very grateful for. We're also grateful for the partnerships that have been set up and the instruments that have been crafted to enable an effective response. In particular, we're grateful for the support available to countries with limited resources, things like COVAX. So we do wish to extend our heartfelt thanks for all of that and say that we hope to be able to continue to work in a cooperative, multilateral framework so that all together we can meet the challenges that we face. Having said that, we also wish to draw attention to the UNGA Resolution twenty-five thirty-two that was initially put forward by Tunisia, and this is intended to strengthen cooperation to meet the challenges of this crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Tunisia. Now I give the floor to Republic of Korea, and after this, Israel wants to take the floor once again, then Israel can join.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The interim report by the Director General highlights that WHO and the international community have lived meaningful research together in a short period of time since the adoption of the Resolution WHO seventy-three point one on the response to COVID-19. I'd like to express my gratitude to Dr. Tedros and the Secretariat for giving us a briefing on the report. After the outbreak of COVID-19, WHO has been facing unprecedented challenges. The effectiveness of WHO's response to COVID-19 and its pivotal role in global health have been called into question by member states. Indeed, such a controversy led to the establishment of the Independent Panel for Pandemic Preparedness and Response. WHO, including the Executive Board, should recognize and consider the current situation in implementing the resolution. Now, nine months into the pandemic, the international community is paying its full attention to the development and manufacturing of diagnostic tools, treatment, and vaccines, and equitable distribution. The Republic of Korea is actively engaging in the ACT Accelerator, its Facilitation Council, and the COVAX facility. The recent listing of a Korean company's product for emergency use, the first WHO EUL for an antigen RDT, would be a window of opportunity to ensure access to diagnostic tools even in circumstances where PCR tests may not be available. I hope in-depth discussion continues in order for equitable distribution of essential health technologies in response to COVID-19 to be achieved. Besides, the discussion on revision of the IHR is on the way mainly by the IHR Review Committee in a way to overcome the pandemic and prepare for post-COVID-19 world. Republic of Korea hopes to keep discussing creation of a multiple-level alert system to complement the binary nature of PHIC. On top of that, we are also looking forward to a full discussion through multiple channels, including the IHR Review Committee, to seek ways to ensure essential movement of people for humanitarian and economic purpose even during a pandemic. I am expecting to hear about detailed update on implementation of Resolution WHO seventy-three point one on the COVID-19 response at the next session of the EBE and the World Health Assembly. Tomorrow... Tomorrow, the Republic of Korea will present the joint statement of Support Group for Global Infection Disease Responses, G4IDR, on behalf of the group. I ask for your support and cooperation in carry out the group's activities. Republic of Korea will continue to work closely together with WHO and the other partners to put an end to COVID-19. I thank you.
Now I give the floor to Israel once again. Israel, you can have the floor, please.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairperson. It's a group statement. I'm speaking on behalf of Australia, Chile, Israel, Japan, New Zealand, the Republic of Korea, Switzerland, Singapore and the United Kingdom of Great Britain and Northern Ireland. We appreciate you keeping us informed on recent developments and ways forward in this important forum, as well as through weekly briefings. We strongly believe that we would only overcome the global challenges we are facing through global solidarity and a commitment to multilateralism. The COVAX facility under the vaccine pillar of the ACT Accelerator is a true manifestation of this collaborative spirit. Our countries strongly support vaccine multilateralism and the goal of ensuring affordable, fair and equitable access to safe and effective COVID-19 vaccine for all. We commend the WHO for its collaborative work with GAVI and CEPI to deliver this shared goal. We highly appreciate the WHO works to produce an allocation framework and allocation mechanism. We believe that the WHO's global leadership, technical knowledge and expertise are fit for the task, guiding the equitable and fair allocation of vaccines once they become available. We would highlight a number of important questions that remain around the allocation framework, including whether and which parts of the final working draft of WHO allocation framework will be further iterated and how member states will be involved? How the methodology proposed for the risk assessment in phase two of the allocation mechanism will be developed and agreed, ensuring both transparency and relevance of indicators measuring threat and vulnerability? Lastly, bearing in mind that WHO plans to provide us with updates later this month, we wish to receive further information of the governance of the allocation framework and the governance structure of the allocation mechanism, which determine the allocation of vaccine to shareholders of the COVAX facility and COVAX AMC eligible economies. In particular, we wish to understand what would be the composition and mandate of this governance structure? The steps that are being taken to avoid duplication in governance structures across the COVAX facility initiative? And how COVAX facility shareholders and COVAX AMC eligible economies would be involved in the design process of the allocation mechanisms as it applies to COVAX? We would welcome any further clarification on these points and also propose a dedicated interactive session on the WHO allocation framework with the COVAX facility shareholders and with COVAX AMC eligible economies. We would welcome discussing with WHO and the suitable timeline for this to ensure timely operationalism of the COVAX facility. We're also looking forward to receive the explainer on how the allocation of vaccine will be operationalized. Together, we hope this will allow agreement to be achieved on a process of allocation that will support fair and equitable access for all to life-saving vaccine. Australia, Chile, Israel, Japan, New Zealand, the Republic of Korea, Switzerland, Singapore and the United Kingdom of Great Britain, Northern Ireland stand ready to further engage with WHO and COVAX and we look forward to further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Israel. Now I would like to request that the Secretariat moderate the discussion. Continuing first with EB members on the virtual platform. Secretariat, you can have the floor now.
Thank you, Chair. Director General, Your Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen. COVID-19 has impacted every aspect of life and livelihoods all over the world. India is tackling the pandemic through a reduce the transmission and protect the vulnerable strategy with whole of government and whole of society pre-active, preemptive and graded approach. We have prioritized both lives and livelihoods. India is maintaining a recovery rate close to eighty-four percent with a fatality rate of less than one point five percent. Further, India has one of the lowest cases and deaths per million of population. Excellencies, COVID has taught us that world is not adequately prepared yet to handle public health emergencies of this dimension. If we have to secure this world for our future generations, we need to remain fully prepared from sub-national to global levels. India has implemented a national action plan to ensure equitable access to healthcare. India has also provided to about hundred and fifty countries medicines and medical supplies mainly as a grant. However, for global health security, the preparedness and response at global level is crucial. In this context, we all recognize the centrality and role of WHO. However, time and again, such pandemics have exposed the weakness of global systems, including the WHO. Therefore, we have to work together and work in harmony to strengthen global systems. Chair, WHO must be vigilant of the emerging health conditions, issue timely warnings utilizing all provisions of the international health regulations, propose interventions and guide nations to effectively combat such pandemics. Towards this end, proactive, decisive and evidence-based guidance from WHO was and is expected. Honorable Chair, India feels that it must be our collective endeavor to make WHO accountable, stronger and more vibrant organization in the interest of our future generations. WHO must also put in place a robust mechanism to ensure fair, affordable and equitable access to vaccines, diagnostics and therapeutics. I thank you, Chair.
Thank you, India. I shall now give the floor to Indonesia, to be followed by Tonga. Indonesia, you have the floor. In the absence of Indonesia, we will move to Tonga. Tonga, you have the floor, please.
Honorable Chair, WHO Director.
Please proceed.
Honorable Chair, WHO Director General, Your Excellencies. Malloy Lele from the Kingdom of Tonga. On behalf of His Majesty's Government and the Pacific Region, I thank you, Chair, and wish to firstly acknowledge the WHO DG's courageous global visionary leadership during this pandemic. I also wish to acknowledge the high-quality update as per Resolution WHO 73.1 2020. Tonga remains COVID-free. The pandemic has catalyzed our government's commitment to universal health coverage. A whole of government commitment has included the financial allocation and along with development partner, Tonga is currently under declarations of public health emergency, emergency notifiable condition COVID-19 and national state of emergency. We are currently reviewing our vaccination act to enhance the legislative framework in preparation for COVID-19 vaccine. And the work that WHO and COVAX facility have done is highly commended. Tonga has also converted a community health center into an enhanced facility capable of serving as a COVID-19 treatment center. In addition, we have established a new laboratory extension facility with RT-PCR capability which enables us to test for COVID-19. We have refurbished the main hospital Biolas Isolation Unit. We are committed to population engagement, empowerment and sustainable partnership. Up to the most community leaders have been the fundamental essence, unifying a nation from the bedrock of communities. We have also distributed basic resources for the outer islands. While these actions were in direct response to COVID-19 pandemic, Tonga has always promoted universal health coverage aligned with the concept of leaving no one behind, though understandably challenging to deliver given scarce resources. Tonga has taken steps to ensure these investments go beyond responding to current pandemic to strengthen the broader healthcare system by fortifying health service delivery and health security capacity, including for response to future outbreaks. Before the pandemic, Tonga adopted a package of essential health service which aims to ensure basic resources and capacity to deliver services at each level of healthcare with particular emphasis on primary healthcare. Globally, we have seen that essential services such as immunization and non-communical disease management have been stalled. Despite the many challenges we are facing, we are doing our best to ensure safe, effective and sustainable NCD management at all levels from communities to hospitals. NCDs are and will always be our top priority for the foreseeable future. Tonga has accelerated efforts such as through a project known as Fana Famaola, an information technology initiative that monitors through the package of essential health services and to provide timely support where needed to ensure health services continue uninterrupted during this pandemic. Our human resources for health are the backbone of our healthcare system and they have also been so during our pandemic response. Thus, they must feel supported to confidently deliver to safeguard a very fragile nation. Part of our pandemic response efforts have included reorientation, reallocation of our staff to our current repatriation program. This means a reduction in the overall healthcare workers for normal service delivery. We have trained more than two hundred staff from communities, remote islands, Ministry of Health, National Emergency Management Office, police, military, fire and airport and seaport staff. This has significantly enhanced the capability of our dedicated frontline team. From the Pacific, the Pacific Islands are in a low transmission situation and we have ongoing transmission in French Polynesia, Guam and an upward trajectory in Papua New Guinea. Fourteen of the Pacific countries and territories are still free of COVID-19. Pacific Islands have taken precautionary approach to opening borders due to lower thresholds for exceeding health system capability. We acknowledge the strong and great leadership of the Regional Director, Dr. Kassai. Finally, the Kingdom of Tonga, together with the Pacific, stand in solidarity to safeguard the very vulnerable population of the Pacific and more importantly, to build back stronger to combat NCDs and climate change and future pandemics. Excellencies, I believe that we must never be intimidated by any forms, means and misinformation when we know we deliver at the highest professional and ethical standards to protect the most vulnerable and as per our due diligence constitution. Thank you, Honorable Chair.
Thank you very much, Tonga. May I now invite Indonesia, to be followed by Kenya and Finland. Indonesia, you have the floor, please.
Uh, thank you, Jen. Excellencies, distinguished participants, the pandemic has exposed the many vulnerabilities of countries resilient to health emergencies. Indeed, the WHO interim report on the implementation of WHO Resolution on COVID-19 response saw that more action need to be done. In this context, allow me that my delegation is of the view that we could promote the following action. Firstly, we should nurture more solidarity and effective cooperation in our global fight to COVID-19. This include efforts to synergize the engagement among and within agencies in the United Nations system at the regional and country level. Empowering local health authorities at the front line is critical to ensure that multilateralism works and deliver on the ground. Secondly, we should continue to advance the principle of accessibility, equitability and affordability to COVID-19 tools in a timely and transparent manner. Such principle would promote global ownership to the ACT Accelerator, CTEP and global allocation framework. At the same time, it will help us to address existing barriers relating to the production and supply chains of COVID-19 tools, including national condition and the distribution mechanism of COVID-19 tools. In doing so, we believe that we should encourage and facilitate further the scaling up of national production capacity to fulfill domestic and regional needs. And finally, we should recommence our shell in implementing WHO health protocols and the IHR to prevent, detect and respond. Evaluation of IHR capacity is one avenue to create stronger and more effective early warning system and mechanism to monitor IHR compliance. Another possible way is by establishing a country-to-country peer review to complement already existing evaluation processes such as the joint external evaluation and the intra-action review. Indeed, the experiences in addressing previous health emergencies is invaluable relation to be learned and could be further applied in our response to COVID-19. Let me conclude, Mr. Chair, by reiterating once again the need for our solidarity and cooperation and for further engaging our stakeholders in our works. I thank you, Mr. Chair.
Indonesia, may I now invite Kenya, to be followed by Finland and then Singapore. Kenya, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Chairperson, Director General, Your Excellencies. Kenya aligns itself with a statement delivered by Bapina Faso on behalf of the African Member States. Kenya is pleased to participate in the fifth special session of the Executive Board and thanks the Director General for the interim report on the implementation of Resolution WHO 73.1 on the COVID-19 response. Led by His Excellency the President, Kenya early on instituted mechanisms to coordinate preparedness and response efforts through a whole of government and whole of society approach. Based on the country's risk assessment, other measures were initiated that prioritize prompt case detection, infection prevention control, risk communication and community engagement. In addition, we enhance surveillance of COVID-19 countrywide, including at all points of entry, scale-up diagnostic and increased local manufacturer execution items such as personal protective equipment, masks and sanitizers. Kenya has also prioritized service provision for communicable and non-communicable diseases, mental health, maternal and childhood and sexual and reproductive health, particularly for refugees and other vulnerable populations. To cushion our population from financial hardship, the government is implementing social and economic measures cash transfers, reduction of taxes amongst other measures. With regards to paragraph nine point eight of the resolution, we request the Director General provide an update on steps taken to develop the menu of outcomes. Provide an update on steps taken to develop the menu of outcomes for scaling up manufacture manufacturing. For Covid nineteen diagnostics, therapeutics, medicines and vaccines. For the consideration of the governing bodies. We also call for greater support for low and middle income countries, which are also being confronted by other challenges. Such as the high debt burden, extreme weather conditions, rising unemployment and concurrent health emergencies. As we move towards the next phase of the response, we ask the Director General. To continue to uphold transparency and equity in the decision making process. And utilize existing governance structures provided for in the W H O constitution for greater ownership. In conclusion, Chairperson, Kenya takes this opportunity to reaffirm as a part for the W H O and its leadership. In coordinating global health, seventy five years since the establishment of the U N. Kenya family believes in the relevance of the multilateral system in providing the best environment. For countries to gently confront and seek for solutions for common challenges. Let us endeavor to build trust amongst U N member states and international institutions. And create a safe and resilient future together. I thank you all for your attention.
Thank you very much, Kenya. May I now invite Finland to be followed by Singapore and then Guyana. Finland, you have the floor, please.
Honorable Chair, Director General, Your Excellencies, Delegates. Finland aligns herself with the statement made on behalf of the European Union and its member states. Finland appreciates the Director General's report on measures to implement the resolution on the Covid nineteen response. We would like to extend our heartfelt thanks to the staff of W H O. Across the globe for their tireless efforts to help manage the pandemic. And its impact on people, societies and the economy. Covid nineteen has been a test to national leadership, to W H O. The U N and global solidarity. Yet we have seen the development of new and transformative models of cooperation. Which we hope to have a lasting impact in the global health landscape. We all have a responsibility to do our part. We cannot blame others if we fail to act. But none of us can do it alone. It's evident that we need to work together. To bring the best minds together, to share information, to pool our resources, to listen to the experts. Even beyond our comfort zones, to base our decisions on science and thorough impact analysis. And most of all, to protect the vulnerable. More than ever, we see the importance of investing in prevention and health promotion, in health system strengthening. In essential public health functions and in social protection. Having emergency legislation, structures and plans in place. And exercising their use in normal times should be the gold standard in all countries and applied by all organizations. However, looking at the global economic forecasts, we are concerned. Tightening budgets require hard decisions. Our duty is to demonstrate that protecting the health of people makes good economic sense. We need a strong W H O to lead us forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Finland. May I now invite Singapore to be followed by Guyana and then Colombia. Singapore, you have the floor, please.
Thank you for giving the floor, Mister Chairman. I look forward to working with E B Chair Dr. Vadan and fellow Executive Board members. When the E B last met in May this year, the world had close to five million confirmed cases. And today we have over thirty four million confirmed cases, more than a sixfold increase. And despite our best efforts, we are still seeing persistent outbreaks and a resurgence. The Covid nineteen response resolution is a strong signal to the world. That global solidarity is needed to win this war against the virus. As a cosponsor, Singapore stands in solidarity with the W H O and member states against this global threat. Let me add three points to our discussion, if you don't mind. First, we commend Dr. Tedros and the E B Joe for its continued leadership. In mounting a global response at the international, regional and national levels. Uh, the regular press conferences and member states' weekly briefings are extremely useful. In keeping the world informed about the latest developments. These provide transparency and inspire confidence. Second, as a member of the A C T Accelerator Facilitation Council, representing the Forum of Small States. And co-chair of the Friends of the Kovax Facility. We applaud the achievement of the Kovax Facility, the vaccines pillar of the A C T A. Engaging countries that cover over seventy percent of the world's population to pool risk and coordinate vaccine deployment. Singapore strongly supports vaccine multilateralism and the goal of ensuring affordable, fair and equitable access. To safe and effective Covid nineteen vaccines for all. We also recognize the critical importance and progress of the other two pillars, diagnostics and therapeutics. Effective outcomes in all three are necessary to overcome the pandemic. Lastly, Covid nineteen has reminded us of our interconnectedness and interdependency. Tackling this pandemic must be a collective effort built on the principles of multilateralism and international cooperation. This is a challenge that no single country can confront on its own. As a specialized agency under the United Nations with the mandate to act as the directing and coordinating authority on international health work. A W H O coordinated international health response to Covid nineteen will continue to be strongly supported by Singapore. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Singapore. May I now invite Guyana to be followed by Colombia.
Thank you very much, President of the Executive Board, Board Members. Director General and Staff of the W H O, Excellencies. On behalf of the government of Guy, government and people of Guyana, we would like to express our sincerest gratitude. To the Director General Dr. Tedros and his team for their pioneering work, leadership and guidance. On the Covid nineteen pandemic. The interim report that we just heard and the technical updates from the executive director is a testimony. Of how much has been accomplished in a relatively short period of time. We thank Dr. Tedros and his team. Excellencies, I also want to thank all of you for electing Guyana to serve in the position of Vice President. To the Executive Board and we look forward to working with all of you. On the noble goal of creating access to better health for all humanity. Excellencies, we know that the road to ending the pandemic is going to be a challenging one. And that the months ahead will be filled with difficulties. Nevertheless, with what has already been accomplished, it gives us tremendous hope and optimism. That our combined efforts will prevail over the Covid nineteen pandemic. We remain grateful for the timely technical updates, the guidelines and of course the resources. Which have helped us to strengthen and improve our country's response to saving lives and livelihoods. We are pleased that through Kovax, through the Kovax mechanism. That two billion doses of vaccines will be made available. And we are delighted that Gavi through Kovax A M C would be assisting several developing economies. In accessing these vaccines. We are grateful for this innovation in creating better access to the most vulnerable. Excellencies, Guyana look forward to the continued collaboration with the World Health Organization. And other partners as we work together to end this pandemic. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Guyana. May I now invite Colombia. Colombia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. We want to express our special thanks to the organization for the measures taken to promote an integrated response to the current Covid pandemic. Which reflects the world and has challenged our health system. As a member of the E B will promote very actively. The strengthening of the international health architecture. And we want everybody to live up to the resolution entitled Responding to Covid nineteen. This way, this important organization will be ready for new challenges. Currently, countries are making huge efforts to mitigate the social and economic efforts of the pandemic. And we've deployed plans to reactivate our different sectors. In this setting, we need to emphasize how important it is to continue to have the technical support of W H O, especially when it comes to development, publication. And the spreading of guidelines and technical documents that support the decision making in our countries. We recognize the fact that this, that the situation is complex. And it has implications with respect to development, production and distribution of diagnostic tests and therapies that respond to Covid. We have managed to speed up all of these and we want to thank W H O in particular. Because of the processes provided in the context of the clinical trial solidarity and A C T accelerator. We are completely convinced that the achievements of both these initiatives will be absolutely essential to win this battle. Which is why Colombia is completely committed to the development of both initiatives and we've taken an active hand in both of them. We remain optimistic with respect to what needs to be done, even though much remains to be done. Especially when it comes to the fair access to vaccines and treatment, access to healthcare services. And epidemiological surveillance. This emergency has allowed us to see clearly the fact that. All countries need to have active, basic infrastructure regarding health as established in international health regulations. We are fully aware of the complexity of the challenge and how the organization needs to adapt to the same. However, we should not abandon other strategic priorities. Nevertheless, we remain convinced that this balance will be struck. So that we'll be able to face public health challenges, not only with respect to the current context, but also broader challenges such as migration. This backdrop represents an opportunity for health services to be put at the heart. Of economic, social and financial policies and to strengthen our resilience at the level of our healthcare system. International cooperation are absolutely, absolutely vital to move forward, which is why we make an appeal for global solidarity to face this challenge. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Colombia. Um, that concludes the interventions from members of the, of the board. Chair, before handing the floor back to you, I should like to inform you that the following countries have requested from the floor, the following non E B members. Jamaica, Thailand, Zambia, Norway, Turkey, New Zealand, Georgia, South Africa. Belarus, Switzerland, Algeria, Peru, Denmark, Japan, Spain. I should now hand the floor back to you, Chair.
Thank you, Secretariat. I would like to propose extension of time for today's session by one hour. That is until nineteen hundred hour C E T, if agreeable to colleagues. I see no objections, so it is decided. I will once again request all the member states. Please observe the time limits agreed to in the method of work. Now I hand over the floor back to the Secretariat for conducting the further course of action.
Thank you very much, Chair. My apologies for the technical challenge. Uh, I shall now revert to the list that I read out earlier before handing the floor back to you in the order that I read them. We will proceed firstly with Jamaica to be followed by Thailand and then Zambia. Jamaica, you have the floor, please.
Thank you, Chair. Jamaica is a cosponsor of the landmark resolution W H A seventy three, seventy three point one. Welcomes this time the special session of the Executive Board on its implementation. And wishes to thank the Director General and his team. We thank the D G for his comprehensive interim report and the Secretariat for its update. Jamaica has reviewed its Covid nineteen response and taken significant measures. To control the outbreak in accordance with the resolution. Jamaica commends the W H O, which in collaboration with other relevant partners of the U N. Has participated in several key initiatives and implemented global strategies. Such as the U N framework for the immediate socio economic response to Covid nineteen. As we grapple with the socio economic ills of the pandemic, the government of Jamaica has adopted several initiatives of its own. As of September, the government of Jamaica has spent four billion Jamaican dollars in its fight of the Covid nineteen pandemic. With these funds, Jamaica was able to invest heavily in its health sector and much needed medical supplies, including its testing capacity. We have also provided cash transfers and compassionate grants to bolster support to key vulnerable groups. We were pleased to have joined the Kovax facility and solidarity trial. This pandemic has shown the importance of global solidarity and cooperation in the response process. The power of partnerships as described by the D G. Diplomatic interventions to secure and distribute Covid nineteen relief supplies have been critical. We express our gratitude to our bilateral and multilateral partners for their unravering support. We also wish to commend the W H O for its transformation efforts as well as its raising of critical funds. As Jamaica and many countries experience this community transmission, we urge all member states to support multilateral efforts. To accelerate the development and production of affordable and effective Covid nineteen vaccines. As well as guarantee fair and equitable access. Let us ensure that together, regardless of size or level of development, we can build back better. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Jamaica. May I now invite Thailand to be followed by Zambia. Thailand, you have the floor, please.
Thank you, Chair. Normative work is the main function of W H O. On Covid nineteen, W H O has public site many recommendation and guidelines. The Thai delegation observed with concern that member states give less and less recognition to these normative works. For example, the W H O recommendation for international traffic dated on twenty nine February. Which advised against travel and trade restriction and the first W H O guidance on face mark. Were not recognized by majority of member states. This decreasing recognition is one of the most serious challenges facing our organization. How can we rebuild trust and regain the social and intellectual capital of the W H O? Chair, the Covid nineteen crisis opens the opportunity. Every country is facing informatic with its social credit and its intellectual network. The W H O can use its country office to support member state to provide the right. And timely information to the public. Furthermore, Chair, Covid nineteen crisis also open the opportunity to motivate member state. To invest more on strengthening health system and I H R system together with U F C. It's the time of crisis that people feel the real needs for the health security and health insurance. Thank you, Chair.
Thailand, may I now invite Zambia to be followed by Norway. Zambia, you have the floor, please.
Thank you, Chair, for giving Zambia the floor, but uh, the statement is going to be read by. Her Excellency the Ambassador, Mrs. Martha Muitumwa. If you can give her the mic, please.
Yeah, I'm, I'm afraid I don't have the ambassador online at the moment. I do have you and.
The ambassador is online. I am able to see her.
Could you please repeat the name?
It starts as M Zambia.
Okay, okay, we do have the ambassador online. Thank you very much. Ambassador, you have the floor, please. We will come, we, my apologies, we will come back to Zambia until.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you, Ambassador. Please proceed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Distinguished delegates, ladies and gentlemen. Zambia aligns with the Africa Regional Statement by Burkina Faso and Tank Secretariat for their report. Chairman, Zambia has so far recorded fifteen thousand and fifty two confirmed Covid nineteen cases. And three hundred and thirty three combined direct Covid nineteen and associated deaths. As of four October twenty twenty. Zambia has been implementing a large central Covid nineteen contagious and response plan. Developed with technical support of W H O and aligned to the global strategic preparedness and response plan. which informs resource mobilization and action. The Zambian government further constituted an emergency fund to the response, which catalyzes the initial procurement of essential commodities, including personal protective equipment. In addition, we have received support from various local and international stakeholders and partners, including the One UN System and the Africa Union. The shortages of essential commodities that continues to rock the low and middle-income countries, LMIC, across the globe have the potential to undermine an effective response to interrupt transmission of COVID-nineteen. It is our concern due that the hope to defeat the virus lies in the full and effective financing and implementation of all the three pillars of the Access to COVID-nineteen Two's Accelerator Act A, as the initiative is well-intended and assures equitable access to vaccines, diagnostics, and therapeutics. We wish to encourage member states to support WHO Secretariat as it takes the lead in this global cause. I thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Zambia. May I now kindly invite Norway to be followed by Turkey? Norway, you have the floor.
Director General, colleagues, COVID-nineteen can only be defeated by all countries working together to strengthen international collaboration and the multilateral system in a spirit of solidarity. An important element in WHO's coordinating role is the establishment of the ACT Accelerator, together with the European Commission. ACT A is the groundbreaking global collaboration to accelerate development, production, and equitable access to COVID-nineteen tests, treatments, and vaccines. Despite progress, the financial gap for ACT A remains large. As co-chair of the Facilitation Council, together with South Africa, Norway is committed to mobilizing support together with other countries and partners. Investing to prevent the pandemic from spreading further will save millions of lives and prevent enormous financial burdens. We commend GAVI, SEPI, and WHO for having established the COVAX facility as the primary tool for ensuring global access to COVID vaccines. Norway participates fully in COVAX as part of a European approach, together with the European Commission, both as a self-financing country as well as investing in the advanced market commitment mechanism that secures access for low-income countries. This coordinated approach makes a crucial contribution to global access by investing not only in AMCs, but also in innovation, clinical trials, and scaling up production at an early stage, thereby advancing the vaccines agenda for the much-needed benefit of all. Norway urges all member states as well as partners to join forces. We must confront one of the most serious health crises to hit the world in recent times together. The case for united action through investments for global solutions has never been stronger, nor has it been more urgent. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Norway. I shall now invite Turkey to be followed by New Zealand. Turkey, you have the floor. Turkey, you have the floor, please.
Thank you, Chair. We thank DG for the report. We commend WHO's effort to strengthen its capacity, its assistance to member states for IHR compliance, and in their responses to pandemic. We also thank the co-chairs of IPPR for their report. We believe one of the important parts of the resolution is the establishment of IPPR. An evaluation of WHO in terms of sufficiency, timeliness, and efficiency of its response should be made without leaving WHO alone in this process. However, the evaluation should not be overwhelming as much as that called WHO to hinder its COVID-nineteen response. It should not be conducted in a way that decreases the overall motivation of WHO and its staff. Distinguished delegates and Director General, we celebrated two thousand twenty as the Year of Nurses and Midwives. We believe that it will be meaningful to carry this forward with a special dedication to all health workers. Therefore, we suggest designating the year two thousand twenty-one as the Year of International Health Workforce in light of their tireless efforts and invaluable commitment in the fight against the COVID-nineteen. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Turkey. I shall now invite New Zealand to be followed by Georgia. New Zealand, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Chairman, it begins in the context of the COVID-nineteen pandemic, an extraordinary situation and at the same time one with which we are having to learn to live. At home, we have responded to the pandemic quickly with an evidence-based and precautionary approach that puts people at the center. Globally, as our New Zealand representative in New York told the General Assembly a few days ago, we support the WHO, and working together, we need to be at our collective best to beat this virus. The Director General's report and oral update on implementation of Resolution seventy-three point one demonstrate the strong and committed response to the COVID-nineteen pandemic by the Director General, Dr. Ryan, and the entire Secretariat. You have our thanks. We have particularly appreciated the WHO's normative guidance on COVID, its support with partners to countries in our Pacific region, and its leadership and collaboration within all arms of the ACT Accelerator, especially in relation to equitable access. We are all in this together. We were proud to be an early co-sponsor of Resolution seventy-three point one and remain interested in all aspects of the follow-up work detailed in the DG's report. Limiting ourselves to one issue now in the interest of time, the report mentions the new division of emergency preparedness tasked with leading on country readiness and preparedness. This is an area of interest to New Zealand, in particular the work underway to ensure readiness to receive and deliver vaccines, especially for small countries with remote populations like those in our region of the Pacific. The report notes that the focus of the Division of Emergency Preparedness was further adjusted in lines with lessons learned from the current pandemic, and be grateful if the Director General or Dr. Ryan were able to comment on any adjustments they may have already foreseen as desirable in relation to country readiness. Thank you.
Thank you very much, New Zealand. I shall now invite Georgia to be followed by South Africa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Honorable Director General, distinguished delegates, at the outset, we thank the Director General for providing the comprehensive report on the response to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Since the first case of virus, the government of Georgia has been taking measures to prevent the spread of COVID-nineteen and implement steps aimed at supporting economic sustainability, providing social assistance to citizens, and minimizing negative financial impacts of the outbreak. Georgia has undertaken significant efforts to adjust COVID-nineteen response mechanisms to the current epidemiological situation. In order to prevent overload of hospitals, contact tracing and isolation of possible cases have been conducted intensively through the epidemiological investigation. Under the state program, twenty-six laboratories perform PCR tests, testing of COVID-nineteen across the country. Since February of two thousand twenty, more than four thousand healthcare professionals have been trained in early diagnosis and infection control of COVID-nineteen. In order to guarantee access to safe and effective COVID-nineteen vaccines for the citizens of Georgia, in September two thousand twenty, my government signed the Commitment Agreement with GAWI Alliance and joined COVAX facility, which is critical to ensure health security and support social stability. Here, we would like to underline that cautious occupation of Abkhazia and Skhinoala regions prevents the government from the possibility to implement the aforementioned measures. During the COVID-nineteen pandemic, our government has done its utmost to provide humanitarian and medical assistance to the conflict-affected people in occupied Abkhazia. While regrettably, the Skhinoala region remains fully closed for the humanitarian aid. I thank you.
Thank you very much, Georgia. I shall now invite South Africa to be followed by Brazil. South Africa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. Your Excellency, thank you for this opportunity to address the Executive Board today. South Africa is pleased to take the floor to firstly thank the Director General for the comprehensive report on the implementation of the Resolution seventy-three point one. We are encouraged by the collaboration between countries, partners, and donors in responding to this pandemic, which demonstrates our global solidarity against an invisible enemy. In particular, we take this opportunity to appreciate the efforts of WHO for the support they've given to South Africa through the deployment of experts working with our frontline workers and national teams. Our delegation aligns with the statement read by Burkina Faso on behalf of the African region. Chairperson, South Africa is pleased and honored to co-chair the ACT A Facilitation Council with Norway. Fully recognizing the strategic political policy and financial challenges presented by COVID-nineteen, we are working to support innovative interventions that identify funding streams that will help us achieve our objectives. Progress has been made with the ACT Accelerator on diagnostic tools such as the rapid antigen tests, which will make a massive difference in access to vaccines as well as life-saving medicines and other supplies as well. We would like to see more collaboration in repurposing and increasing local production in less resource setting. Drawing from previous epidemics, we want to stress the importance of the health systems connector, which will be the enabler for effective and timely delivery. The continued efforts to achieve the SDG and aligning with the GPW thirteen strategic priorities cannot be overemphasized. This pandemic has once again exemplified the importance of the principle of solidarity, international cooperation, as well as multilateralism towards achieving equitable access. Financing is one of the greatest challenges before us. Resources are needed to fund and resuscitate our houses. Through our collaboration and solidarity seen in recent ones, we can beat COVID-nineteen. We encourage high-income countries to follow the example of the United Kingdom in their contribution to the accelerator. In doing so, we should not disrupt funding for other historic healthcare funding. I thank you.
Thank you very much, South Africa. May I now invite Brazil to be followed by Mexico. Brazil, you have the floor.
Over one million lives lost and struggle to cope with the dire social and economic consequences of this pandemic, it is high time for the member states to take stock of the international response and advance towards a healthier future. WHO, together with Pahu in the Americas, has been playing an important role in the COVID-nineteen pandemics. So is GAVI and SEPI with the COVAX facility, which Brazil has joined along with others. This health emergency has also exposed gaps, failings, and fragilities that we cannot afford prolonging and repeating. We all need to come out better of this pandemic, and this means better multilateral institutions as well. This implies more, not less, interaction with member states, more, not less, inclusive consultations with members and engagement with member states. A reform led by and in the interests of member states is therefore necessary and urgent. A reform to promote better compliance by means of more collaboration, transparency, and accountability, and efficiency. A reform to give a strong push towards strong national health systems, universal health coverage, and access to affordable medicines and other medical products. This crisis has only accentuated the relevance of those three dimensions of a healthier world. The fair allocation mechanism is central in this effort. With a robust universal healthcare system, a strong national network for surveillance and response to public emergencies, and a large vaccine production capacity, Brazil is ready to engage with other interested member states in such a reform process at the WHO. The roadmap circulated by the US, which Brazil co-sponsors, sets a good basis for launching a more structured conversation to raise the standards of our collective action with the member states at the driver's seat. In closing, Brazil reiterates its gratitude for the health workers' courage and relentless work in the frontline. Mr. Chairman, allow me to congratulate Austria for its initiative on a retreat of the EB. While the EB has important governance prerogatives, and they should be preserved and observed, we have before us a global pandemic which affects all of us without exception. So our proposal would be to convene an open-ended hybrid retreat that allows for everyone, every interested country, to participate and enrich the debate. Under this more inclusive format, the EB's decisions would be even stronger, even more legitimate. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brazil. I shall now invite Mexico to be followed by Uruguay.
Thank you, Chair. We are very grateful for the report that's been presented today on behalf of the Secretariat. The implementation of this resolution allows us to see the progress made and also implement best practices in this context and in future pandemics. In Mexico, we have designed and carried out a response to the pandemic in accordance with IHR, following the principles of transparency and accountability without interfering in international trade and always bearing in mind the guidelines and advice of WHO. Thus it is that we want to thank WHO for its technical guidance throughout the COVID-nineteen pandemic, and we invite the Secretariat to continue to transmit in active manner all these recommendations through the usual formal channels, bearing in mind that the spread of technical recommendations in press releases cannot lead to misinformation and confusion when it comes to facing the pandemic. Mexico wants to emphasize the importance of WHO when it comes to promoting multilateralism and an approach based on solidarity, which will lead to a fair and just access to medicines and in particular a vaccine. Mexico is very much committed with this, which it sees as the core of the resolution and also in Resolution two seven four slash seventy-four, which is the reason why Mexico supports ACT Accelerator and COVAX. Both measures are essential to reach these goals. The vaccine against COVID-nineteen needs to be a global public good. That has been recognized by WHO. In other words, by us, the member states, in the resolution that we are looking at today. We need to live up to this commitment, all of us together, and live up to our commitments and the fair distribution of this tool once it is available. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mexico. May I now invite Uruguay to be followed by Canada. Uruguay, you have the floor.
Thank you. Señor Director General, distinguidos delegados, la pandemia de COVID diecinueve continua haciendo trabajos en el mundo. En la Asamblea Mundial de la Salud del mes de mayo, el ministro de Salud Pública del Uruguay informó sobre la acción del país frente a la pandemia, que incluía otras cosas, el rastreo de contactos, el cierre parcial de fronteras, normas de protección para el personal de salud, una aplicación móvil para los usuarios, la priorización de la atención primaria en domicilio, el establecimiento de centros de contingencia específicos de atención de personas en situación de cachel, intervenciones en reciclar y negativos de asentamientos regulares. También se anticipó y duplicó la vacunación antivinipal y se promovió el uso de tapabocas. Se suspendieron las ventas masivas, alentando a la población a evitar desplazamientos innecesarios y mantener las distancias sin aplicar un conciliamiento obligatorio. Cuando se registró el primer caso de COVID, Uruguay contaba con un sólido sistema de salud pública y con un gobierno nacional recién asumido, pero con voluntad política de trabajar con todas las actores relevantes de la sociedad en el control de la pandemia. En marzo, el Ministerio de Salud convocó a un comité de expertos científicos en gestión de crisis para delinear la estrategia sanitaria. Otra medida temprana fue la creación del fondo de la vida financiado con la fuerza de los funcionarios públicos de nuestro país. El gobierno también flexibilizó las condiciones de seguridad del empleo para beneficiar a los trabajadores afectados por la pandemia y atemplar las consecuencias con un caso original. Además, estableció corredores humanitarios para turistas. We also promoted humanitarian corridors that would benefit tourists, and we also had the operation everybody at home, which allowed for the repatriation of many Uruguayans abroad. We also addressed the case of refugees and foreigners who might have had permanent residence in our country. At an international level, Uruguay has joined many multilateral efforts to respond to this pandemic and to future ones, and to fair and equitable access to vaccines. These measures, in the light of the characteristics demographical of the country, have always borne in mind the specific demographic interests of our country. And this has been known as the measures that always respect the rights of our citizens. The strategy we've carried out to control the pandemic reflects assumptions of collective decision that was taken by all members of WHO in the last World Health Assembly. Thank you to the organization for its leadership and to the countries for their efforts.
And countries for their efforts. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Uruguay. May we now invite Canada to be followed by Belarus. Canada, you have the floor, please.
73.1 recognizes that COVID-19 can be contained and controlled through leadership, global cooperation, unity, and solidarity, and that all of us, including WHO and member states, have specific roles to play and responsibilities to fulfill in that effort. Clearly, we have more work to do. The virus and its collateral impacts are affecting the mental and physical health of vulnerable populations, exacerbating inequalities everywhere and reversing development gains. An equity-based and gender-responsive approach is the only way forward to respond to and recover from the COVID-19 pandemic. We cannot beat this virus unless we end it everywhere and build resilience for the future. Canada commends Director General Tedros and all WHO staff for their tireless efforts and the results achieved to date. We need a strong WHO to help us bring this pandemic to an end. Member states are here to provide strategic guidance and support to allow you to carry out your mandate. We would like to particularly highlight the WHO's leadership in accelerating equitable access to COVID-19 health technologies. Canada has made significant commitments to the COVAX facility and is pleased to be participating in this unique multilateral solution. WHO's role in developing the allocation framework is central to the facility's success, and we look forward to participating in the development of the framework's diagnostic and therapeutic elements. All of us will learn from this pandemic. This includes learning more about the zoonotic source of the virus and the root of introduction to humans. The mission to understand the source of the virus, called for in Resolution 73.1, will therefore be critical to help prevent future pandemics. Canada will continue to be a committed global partner in all of these efforts. Let me end by expressing our deep concern over the recent allegations of sexual exploitation and abuse in the DRC. We expect those responsible will be held accountable, victims supported, and the failures of existing systems to prevent this addressed. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Canada. I shall now invite Belarus to be followed by Switzerland. Belarus, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. The delegation of the Republic of Belarus is grateful to the Director General for the documents submitted. We note the importance of implementation of Resolution WHOA 73.1. This resolution launched the process of assessing COVID-19 international response measures. We recognize the leading role played by WHO as a coordinator bringing together the capacities of states focused on combating the pandemic. We are convinced of the need for further strengthening of this organization and its response mechanisms to allow us to meet healthcare challenges. We also believe it to be important to ensure interaction among countries in exchanging relevant experience. On that point, I would like to express thanks to the People's Republic of China and the Russian Federation. In fact, they have given genuine effect to the appeal contained within the Resolution WHOA 73.1, that is to say, the appeal on exchanging knowledge and experience. In particular, Belarus has received the first doses of the Russian vaccine Sputnik V, and as of the 1st of October, we have begun clinical trials. We call upon WHO to continue to provide support to the efforts being undertaken by member states in combating the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Belarus. May I now invite Switzerland to be followed by Algeria. Switzerland, you have the floor.
Chair, Director General, so we think therefore that we have to continue in future to ensure the WHO has a budget that is robust, transparent, long-term, and of high quality. However, if we look at the program and budget for 2022-2023, we only got a few vague ideas about it at the 70th session of the Regional Committee for Europe, and that is a cause of concern for us. All member states need the time required to make an informed decision on the forthcoming program and budget. We would therefore call upon the Secretary to submit the documents required as rapidly as possible so that all member states can make informed decisions on the forthcoming budget and related program. My second point is that Switzerland has adopted a national response that's in line with global efforts to combat this pandemic. We support research and development, production, and equitable access to testing, to treatments, therapeutics, and vaccines, and we contribute to the three pillars of the WHO and the various organizations involved in the ACT Accelerator. We also participate in the COVAX facility, a new, unique multilateral mechanism aimed at finding a truly global solution to ensure equitable access and distribution of future COVID-19 vaccines. Further, Switzerland wishes to associate itself with the statement made by Israel. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Switzerland, and our apologies once again for that interruption in your earlier part of your statement. Could we now invite Algeria to be followed by Denmark? Algeria, you have the floor.
Chairman, Algeria wished to congratulate you on your election as Chair of the Executive Council and to assure you of its support. My delegation takes note of the interim report from the Director General and implementation of the Resolution on COVID-19 Response, and we commend the leadership of WHO in the global fight against this pandemic. Further, Algeria takes this opportunity of expressing its willingness to work towards implementation of the Resolution at national, regional, and international levels. In that regard, my country is among those who urge all relevant stakeholders to ensure effective implementation, in particular Paragraph IV, which calls for the universal, timely, and equitable access to and fair distribution of all quality-safe, efficacious, and affordable essential health technologies and products that are required in the response to COVID-19, end of quote. Given this unprecedented health crisis, no one should be left behind. Algeria welcomes the coordinated global strategies and frameworks put in place by WHO and its partners to mitigate the impact of the pandemic. We have taken note with interest of the mechanisms set up in the framework of the ACT Accelerator and look forward in the near future to knowing more about their final structure and operation. The world is waiting with great hope for the development of safe and efficacious COVID-19 vaccines. That being so, WHO and its partners involved in this endeavor are encouraged to continue to inform member states regularly and transparently on the progress of new diagnostics, clinical trials of candidate vaccines, and their inclusion in the emergency use listing in order to adequately assess risks and benefits. In conclusion, Algeria also wishes to reaffirm that it is together that we fight this pandemic, and it is together that we will overcome it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Algeria. I shall now invite Denmark to be followed by Japan. Denmark, you have the floor, please.
Members of the Executive Board, delegates, Director General, Denmark fully aligns itself with the statement by Germany on behalf of the EU and its member states. The world continues to be heavily engaged in mitigating the COVID-19 pandemic. Regionally, we see resurgence of epidemics, also in Denmark. I would like to thank the WHO for the enormous support in handling the epidemic and for supporting the member states through this global crisis. Denmark strongly supports international health cooperation. The current crisis has taught us that we need a strong WHO, now more than ever. Denmark strongly supports the independent evaluation of the COVID-19 response, and we warmly welcome the adoption of the resolution in May. How we respond, how we learn, and how we recover from the COVID-19 crisis, this will determine the world's ability to handle and prevent future global health threats. Hence, a key objective of the reform process will be to strengthen the preparatives and to strengthen the crisis response mechanisms of the WHO. In this regard, we should aim at creating a better balance between global expectations and the actual capacities of the organization. For the WHO to be able to deliver on the international community's expectations, there is a need for sustainable funding of the organization. The Danish government is currently planning to double our voluntary contribution to the WHO. At the same time, we must not lose sight of the overall mandate and role of the WHO. We need to safeguard the capacity of the organization to handle and develop other core tasks as defined in the WHO Constitution. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Denmark. I shall now invite Japan to be followed by Peru. Japan, you have the floor, please.
Thank you, Chair. We welcome the progress seen in implementation of the Resolution WHOA 73.1 as addressed by the Prime Minister Suga at the 75th session of the United Nations General Assembly this September. At this time of the current crisis, it is essential to set the goal of leaving no one's health behind, guided by the principle of human security. As we walk towards achieving universal health coverage, in response to the current crisis, Japan has provided international aid of over 1.54 billion US dollar to medical and health sectors. As part of this cooperation, Japan contributed approximately 76.4 million to the Strategic Preparedness and Response Plan this year to support the member states with vulnerable health systems. In addition, Japan has been supporting development of innovative medical products as well as equitable and affordable access to diagnostics, therapeutics, and vaccines through ACT Accelerator. As a founding member of the ACT Facilitation Council, Japan has also announced its official commitment to the COVAX facility at the earliest possible date to actively promote COVID-19 responses around the world. We would also like to emphasize the importance of reviewing the function of the IHR based on the experiences in responding to COVID-19. We welcome the effort of the IHR Review Committee and hopes that the discussion reflect the lesson learned in response to COVID-19. Given that member states are the ones to implement IHR, we expect the full engagement of member states in discussion so that to encourage future commitment to strengthen capacity to meet IHR commitment and compliance. The response to COVID-19 pandemic, including efforts to control the infection in the cruise ships, review the critical challenges across various existing arrangements. We should take this opportunity to fully discuss all these issues for the future health crisis. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Japan. May I now invite Peru to be followed by Spain. Peru, you have the floor.
Peru's government wishes to express its solidarity with those who have lost their dear ones due to the pandemic and wants to express its recognition for those who fight as first responders. The pandemic is one of the greatest challenges mankind had had to face since the Second World War. It has laid bare the differences we have when it comes to reaction and response. The recommendations that stem from evaluatory bodies, as well as those that we already had beforehand, need to converge in a concerted multilateral response. All members of the WHO need to work together and use its liberative bodies to reach solid, long-lasting agreements that bear in mind lessons learned so that we can strengthen the organization, improve its preparedness and response to pandemics, as well as the implementation of IHR. Peru is completely convinced that we need to strengthen multilateralism through organizations such as WHO. This will benefit international governance on health matters as well as international cooperation so that we can reach universal health coverage. Mister Chairman, in accordance with Peru's commitment with multilateralism, my country has joined the COVAX facility, and we urge all of us to work together, be it academics, the private sector, governments, philanthropies, and others, to all pool their efforts to benefit the largest number of people and to provide a global public good for all. In the face of this multilateral and multifaceted challenge, the 2030 agenda needs to be our roadmap to overcome the challenges towards sustainable development without leaving anybody behind. Thank you very much.
Spain to be followed by Cuba. Spain, you have the floor.
Extinguished Chairman, DG, colleagues. Spain supports the statement made by the European Union and its member states. And we have to reiterate our thanks for organizing this special session of the EB. The measures that we've been adopting over the last months have focused on science-based evidence stemming from WHO. And we need to strengthen that organization. Spain has made a great effort to continue to provide access to health for everyone. And we are decidedly supportive of universal healthcare. In July, my country accepted an early reaction plan, which sped up our rapid reaction testing measures. We have a strategic reserve of PP equipment as well as other health equipment, which can be rolled out depending on demand. Our serological studies that have been recognized at an international level has allowed us to better understand the impact of the pandemic in our country. That is why we'll be carrying out another round of the study in the coming months. We are also using new technologies, such as applications, that allowed for a facilitated contact tracing effort. Last but not least, we have expanded our flu vaccine campaign, but we are also participating actively in international initiatives to find a safe and effective vaccine against COVID-19. We also want its access throughout the world to be fair and equitable, as is shown by our support of the ACT Accelerator and COVAX facility. This will guarantee a fair overcoming of the violence. WHO can count on Spain to that end. Thank you very much.
Shall I give the floor to Cuba?
Señor President.
Cuba wishes to recognize the work of the DG as well as the World Health Organization when it comes to facing the COVID-19 pandemic. From the beginning, the DG led the effort that's been a priority for the Cuban government. The cross-cutting approach, the immediate making of decisions, the focus on establishing priorities as well as upholding a holistic approach has had positive results and has prevented the collapse of our different health systems. We can only be strong if we have public health systems that are inclusive, free of charge, and accessible to all, providing primary care via doctors that are a ratio of one per every nine inhabitants. Our attention, our health protocol, and our focus on the medicines that have been developed by our health industry has allowed us to save 96% of our patients in this context. This is higher than the world and the regional averages. Cuba has an excellent response to the COVID-19 as well as a vaccine that is already undergoing clinical trials. We support the Director General and broad cooperation when it comes to facing this challenge, including not only WHO but also other UN agencies that are in general working for a coordinated and integrated response. We also would like to highlight that the support of different governments to our country should be highlighted. Many have contributed, and we've also helped other countries, not only in Latin America but also in the Caribbean, in Africa and the Middle East, as well as Asia. We have also contributed in other ways. We want to reiterate our support to WHO's leadership in the face of this pandemic, and we want to join our voice through the appeal made by many countries that we need to continue with the principles of governance and accountability that are part and parcel of the organization. This will improve our management of future pandemics and crises. We want to express similarly our complete support of international solidarity. This is essential if humanity is going to overcome the current crisis, and therefore, we support WHO and all member states, and stating once again that they can count on our full support. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Cuba. Chair, that concludes the interventions for non-EB member states. With your permission, I should like to inform you that we have a request for the floor from our observers, and I should give the floor to them if it is acceptable to you, Chair. We have a request from Palestine and Gavi Alliance. Gavi. I shall now like to invite Palestine to be followed by Gavi.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to thank the Secretary for organizing this timely EB special session on COVID-19. Palestine aligns itself with the statement delivered earlier by His Excellency Minister of Health Oman on behalf of Emir. Chair, like His Excellency Minister Oman mentioned earlier, that many countries of our region, Emir, are managing COVID-19 and other conditions. It is the case in Palestine, we are fighting COVID-19 despite occupation and Palestinian and restriction of movement of people. and restriction of movement of people and ambulances and mobile test clinics in area city and access to East Jerusalem. Palestine highly appreciates the work of WHO Office in the occupied Palestinian territory in East Jerusalem. We commend WHO technical support Palestine, Health Ministry, and the efficiency of WAC with other UN agencies, UNRWA, UNICEF, OCHA, and international partners like GAVI. Chair, access to vaccines remain essential and vital to vulnerable and fragile population and occupation. Chair, the global response to the pandemic and the effective multilateralism and working all together and solidarity are essential to achieve health for all and leaving no one behind. I thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Palestine. I should now invite GAVI to be followed by the IAEA. GAVI, you have the floor, please.
Thank you, Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
Since the 73rd World Health Assembly in May 2020, COVAX, the advanced sciences pillar of ACT Accelerator, co-led by WHO, and the IAEA have made remarkable progress. By supporting the COVAX facility, economies the world over have operationalized the World Health Assembly COVID-19 resolution through the path of global cohesion and solidarity in the face of an immediate and existential threat. This is truly a historical achievement. As of today, a total of 168 economies, representing nearly two-thirds of the global population, are now engaged with the facility. To ensure that low and middle-income countries, low and middle-income economies get accelerated and equitable access and are ready to deliver vaccines when the moment comes, the GAVI Board has approved up to 150 million US dollars in initial funding to support planning, technical assistance, and cold chain equipment. This will be supported by contributions from low and middle-income economies themselves. Excellencies, I thank you for recognizing the role of extensive immunization against COVID-19 as a global public good. However, to ensure that vaccines are available to the most vulnerable in every economy, not just a wealthy few to help bring the pandemic to an end, GAVI asks for your support to fully fund the GAVI-COVAX Advanced Market Commitment to meet its target of US $2 billion by the end of 2020 and at least another $5 billion US more by the end of 2021. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I understand next the IAEA would be taking the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Honorable Ministers. I'm pleased to be speaking to you on behalf of the IAEA. The IAEA is the worst forum for the scientific and technical cooperation and the peaceful use of technology. The IAEA has long and proven track record on developing and deploying nuclear and nuclear-derived techniques for the rapid and accurate detection of animal and zoonotic diseases. Over the past two decades, in partnership with FAO, the IAEA has trained and equipped experts around the world to use real-time reverse-transcription polymerase chain reaction, RT-PCR, to detect major zoonotic and animal diseases such as the Influenza Influenza, Ebola, and Zika virus diseases after using our own health laboratory and veterinary diagnostic network. These previous successful underground interventions by the IAEA in response to zoonotic diseases has proven the necessary technical capacity and expertise to effectively respond to the requests from our member states in response to COVID-19. Since the outset of the COVID-19 pandemic in March, 124 member states and three non-member states have requested assistance for IAEA support to use RT-PCR for the detection of COVID-19 infection. In addition to providing the necessary equipment for support, the IAEA in collaboration with FAO have provided guidance on COVID-19 detection to 259 medical and veterinary laboratories, including the provision of standard operational procedures to identify the virus following WHO recommendations. The agency has also convened webinars in support of the work of healthcare professionals. These sessions have proven useful in providing advice to nuclear medicine, radiology, and radiation oncology departments of member states and has allowed for the sharing of best practices in rotation policy and the use of personal protection equipment. Partnerships are essential to the IAEA work, and the pandemic has shown how critical it is for a coordinated assistance. We are also pleased to be part of the United Nations Crisis Management Team for COVID-19 led by WHO, and we have ensured that all equipment and materials procured to address IAEA member state requests are in alignment with the overall UN response. Looking ahead, the IAEA will continue to collaborate with all stakeholders, including our UN family, to find an integrated, holistic approach to prevent, control, and mitigate zoonotic diseases. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much to the IAEA for this intervention. I understand who now hand back to the Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no further comments on this item. I have been informed that the Russian Federation would like to exercise the right of reply. As mentioned during the opening, the right of reply will be accorded at the end of the day. I will now ask Dr. Tedros and other members of the Secretariat to provide any further comments. Dr. Tedros and other members of the Secretariat, you have the floor, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Dr. Micran will take the floor and other colleagues will also comment based on the issues raised by our member states. Thank you.
Thank you all. And certainly, and certainly, I appreciate and I know the staff of WHO at all levels who, after nine, ten very hard months, will deeply appreciate the comments of member states that reflected upon their efforts, which have been tireless in your service over the last nine months. There are lots of questions about ACT, lots of questions. I'm going to leave any follows to Sumi on issues related to the research and development and Bruce, obviously, the DG will direct questions there. There were a couple of requests for follow-up in the areas, particularly around the Division of Emergency Preparedness. I know New Zealand and others referred to that. And it's fantastic to have this new division within the Emergencies Program. It's led by Dr. Jawad Najjar, he's listening in. I don't think the technology will stretch to bringing him in in the process. New Zealand's specific commentary was regarding plans to ensure that country readiness was at the center of that program. The Division of Emergency Preparedness as part of transformation was created in three departments. Country readiness strengthening is one of those new departments, which is led by Nedves Emreoglu from Turkey, who was previous Regional Emergency Director in Europe. There's also the Health Systems Preparedness Group, which focuses on many, many aspects of assessing and monitoring and supporting country-long-term preparedness and strategic planning, and the Global Infectious Disease Preparedness Group, which is responsible for pandemic preparedness and from which a lot of the health technical operations capacity for this response comes, emerging diseases and all of that. In terms of the Department of Readiness itself and looking again at New Zealand's question, it is really important that the health system be ready, especially for vaccination. As part of that, the Health Systems Connector and the DDG who's behind me may wish to comment on that, of the ACT Accelerator is an important connection between my program and the other programs around getting systems ready because we have the vaccine, we have our vaccines department, we have our logistics, we have the Health Systems Preparedness and the Science Division and many others working together to ensure that countries have the capacity to absorb, transport this vaccine to the field and use it. Some of these experimental vaccines require two doses. Some of them currently require minus 80-degree transport. We already have seen some of the issues regarding vaccine hesitancy. And remember again, this vaccine will be delivered in the main to adults. And mass vaccination of adults is not something that health systems attempt every day. It's quite the challenge. And anyone who's done mass campaigns in the, especially in the context of epidemics and particularly vaccine hesitancy, is a major challenge. So we would agree, we will do our best to support our colleagues in ACT to ensure that we, our Department of Readiness and the Division of Emergency Preparedness provides full support there. Beyond that, the Division itself is really, really important because it fundamentally recognizes the fact that WHO needs to be doing more than responding and assisting member states, that we have to fundamentally move and recognize the duality that readiness and preparedness is the investment we need to make. And if we do that, response will be less, less frequent, less costly. And that is the direction, and Dr. Tedros was very, very clear in that's direction of travel for the organization. There were a couple of other questions related to travel and the IHR in particular. And we, I think from Austria at the beginning, and then there were a couple of follow-ups on that from other countries. I think this is a very important issue. And it really speaks to the mandate offered within the IHR to the Director General. WHO, for example, when it comes to travel restrictions or travel between countries, the IHR does not prevent any country imposing travel measures or not on another country. There is no policing power. WHO has only got the right to demand that the country imposing such a restriction provide a public health justification for that restriction. And the IHR only asks that there be public health restriction and that any such measures be only imposed for the minimum amount of time and that countries would seek to reduce the impact on travel and trade while implementing such measures. WHO has absolutely no power to impose that upon any state. And that is what was agreed in 2005 between the member states of WHO and came into force in 2007. It would be for the member states possibly in the aftermath of the IHR Review Committee. And the IHR Review Committee are looking at this issue as to what could be advised to member states on that specific issue. That would also obviously speak to the delegate from Austria's question. If WHO were to be moved into a position where it would effectively become the arbiter between countries regarding what travel could or couldn't happen on the basis of public health, that would be a major move for the Secretariat. That would require massive resources, it would require a huge mandate that would probably go beyond the existing mandate of IHR. But again, that is a member state issue. So I think it is an interesting point. It's a very pertinent question as the country tries, as the world tries to move again. The question is who oversees and who manages the free movement of people and goods in the context of an epidemic. The IHR does not specify that, nor does it mandate an organization that does that. And that again comes back to the way in which the IHR might be revised. And to the question from the UK, I think there was, I think it was Australia and the UK asked about the intermediate level of alert. And that certainly is being discussed as one of the areas by the IHR Review Committee, one of the working groups of that committee. And Dr. Lotar Vila will report to you tomorrow, and I'm sure Lotar will have much more information. But that is one of the specific issues that the IHR Review Committee has taken under its wing and is looking at. And again, will offer advice to the Executive Board and to the Assembly regarding their views on the feasibility, workability, and how such an intermediate level of alert could be designed, could be implemented, and could be monitored. It's, I think, there were the main questions that relate to my area of work. And again, we thank you all for the support. And I'll hand back to the DG. We may wish to hand to Sumia or Bruce.
Thank you, DG. And I will be very brief, but I just wanted to make a couple of quick points. I think the first one was around the norms and standards and the guidelines that we've had to develop. As Mike mentioned, over 400 technical guidelines and other types of reports have been put out in the last eight months. And we've had to make sure that we have, we follow the standard procedures to ensure quality and thorough review of literature before this goes out, but at the same time ensuring speed. And we put together a Publications Review Committee that turns things around within 48 hours and still manages to ensure a very good review. We've also set up a large number of expert groups that have been working on these guidelines with us. As you know, the guidelines are developed by guideline development groups, which consist of global experts that we bring together. And so we wish to thank all of these hundreds of experts who've been contributing. What we would like to do next is to do a review of the uptake and implementation of our guidance in countries. And that's something that I would like to request member states to really work with us because we do see that sometimes there's a gap between what we put out and what's actually implemented in countries for a number of different reasons, not just for COVID but for our guidance documents in general. And we would like to improve that aspect as well. So really looking at doing the guidance in a timely manner, making sure of the scientific excellence, but also ensuring that there's implementation and uptake of the guidance in a timely manner. And many of you mentioned the solidarity trials and we're very grateful to all of the principal investigators as well as the Ministries of Health of all the countries that have participated in the solidarity therapeutics trial and are expressing an interest for the vaccine trial. And I hope that in the next few weeks we will be able to make a lot of progress on the solidarity vaccine trial. The goal is to test as many candidates as possible in as efficient a way as possible in order to make sure that we have a variety of effective and safe vaccines for us to choose from. And Mary Angela, who works closely with us on the access and allocation side, would have something to say about, again, a number of questions that you had raised around fair and equitable allocation. Thank you.
DG, if I could just take before, again, something I forgot to say to the group. With regard to vaccine readiness, I think this is again reflects on the investments made by this body and by the World Health Assembly in the past and based on the creation by the Assembly and negotiation of the PIP framework. In fact, the whole vaccine readiness and allocation framework are activities that are actually based on the PIP framework and the preparedness work that was done to create the legal agreements and the processes and the methodologies and the working agreements. In effect, many of the legal team and others who work within PIP have been central and working with Mary Angela, working with others. Some half of my team works for Mary Angela on adapting the allocation framework, using again the experience we gained through the PIP process. So in that sense, we've been, many parts of this organization, practicing for this moment. And I think it does illustrate that nothing useful goes to waste if you are able to move it around in an agile fashion. So I don't think anyone in WHO knows who they're reporting to anymore. I think people have changed operational supervisors based on the outputs we need. Secondly, interaction reviews have been a really important part now of this response. We used to do after-action reviews, and I think they were very, very useful. Now we've adapted that to interaction reviews. And it's very interesting, nine countries, including Thailand, 10, including Thailand, who took the floor, have completed formal interaction reviews during the period of the pandemic, looking at their own response, looking for improvements in that response. And it would seem very prudent, nine months in, that countries have a formal and structured way of looking at the response so far to give a direction going forward. Those guidelines are available, and the Secretariat remains available to provide any support you would like to carry out such reviews in the coming weeks and months.
Thank you, Dr. Tedros. Excellencies, Executive Board members, there are a number of questions and references to the ACT Accelerator, which I might just respond to. First, with our thanks for the great interest in the accelerator and especially to the number of member states who reaffirm the importance of all three parts, four parts of the accelerator, the diagnostics. the diagnostics, therapeutics, vaccines, and indeed Health Systems Connector piece, because it's only with all of those operating or working are we really going to get out of this pandemic as rapidly as possible. There are a couple of specific questions, one on the need to accelerate availability of additional test capacity. I'd like to emphasize again the announcements made by the Director General over the last two weeks of the emergency use listing now by WHO of the first two rapid antigen tests. And in combination with that, an agreement by the ACT Accelerator partners, especially FID, Global Fund, UNITAID, and the Gates Foundation, working with WHO and CHI, to make available a volume guarantee of 120 million new vaccine tests at a discounted price of $5 per test. The challenge now, of course, is the financing issues as well as the technology transfers that will fall. In there, in vaccines, there are a number of questions, one with respect to the management capacity for the COVAX facility, and I'd like to emphasize that we're right now in the process of building a management team with a strong managing director now appointed and the full team being onboarded to ensure we have the management capacity necessary for this endeavor. There are questions as well about the IP and vaccine availability, and I'd like to emphasize again that our immediate priority is ensuring that we have efficacious and safe vaccines and working in parallel with that to increase capacity, optimize price. There are a number of questions on country preparedness. Mike has referenced that. But I would emphasize again, in the financing gap that the Director General referred to in his comments, a key proportion of that is actually to help ensure country readiness can be strengthened in parallel with the development work that's ongoing. On the issue of equitable distribution of these products, I would suggest that our colleague, ADG Mary Angela Smaul, can address those points. But we certainly appreciate the recognition of WHO's role on the allocation framework and development of allocation mechanisms, not just for vaccines, but also for therapeutics and other COVID-19 products. Further questions, consultation, and specific working session on the equitable allocation mechanism, and would, of course, welcome that. There were comments made on financing, which we appreciate and would emphasize again the need for the financing of the AMC, as was commented on by a couple of member states. Finally, on the issues of information sharing, we will be continuing to brief member states through the weekly COVID briefings, and then should there be other opportunities or requests, we'd be happy to do whatever necessary that would be helpful to our member states. Finally, in closing, I'd just like to thank again all those member states who have contributed to the success of the ACT Accelerator, particularly through its financing and the generous contributions we've realized recently, which have brought total contributions to the ACT Accelerator to nearly $4 billion. Although the gap remains substantive, we'd again like to recognize this. I'd finally like to recognize our co-chairs of the Council, Norway and South Africa, who've just provided tremendous support and guidance to us as the secretariat for the ACT Accelerator over the past month, and we look forward to working closely with them to address the issues raised by member states.
It's, okay. Thank you very much for giving me the floor. And I would like to join my colleagues to thank the member states for their support. There are three issues that you raised on which I would like to pick up. First of all, to say that from the beginning of the crisis, it was the strategic decision of the Director General to continue our work in all the pillars of GPW 13, including UHC and healthy populations. And as Germany and UK and several other member states highlighted, it is important, as we do not want to go back and to lose the health gains that we have achieved during the last decades. As a result, when we reviewed our work plan implementation during the summer, we noted that we had an implementation rate of about 85 to 90 percent. And the same continues now, and this applies also to Pillar One and Pillar Three of the GPW. We have also adapted our work to the new working environment with the countries, and our work is ongoing virtually, both capacity building and technical cooperation, which have never stopped. The second issue is about the disrupted public health programs. As many of you highlighted, we were also extremely concerned by the significant disruption of essential services and public health programs. It was highlighted by Minister of Health of Oman on behalf of the emerald countries, by the Chief Medical Officer of UK and many other countries. And therefore, in the last couple of weeks and months, we worked hard to review the situation through global pulse surveys, which was conducted in 105 member states. But also, we supplemented these pulse surveys by more specific surveys in the disease-specific areas like HIV, TP, malaria, NCD management, mental health, and immunization, working together with partners. And in order to support the member states to restart the stalled services, we developed a comprehensive guideline across all the programs and all the populations. And we initiated a program to boost the restart of the disrupted programs in the countries through virtual and actual deployment of staff, and in order to support the guidance to the member states. This work is still ongoing, together with the regional and the county offices, and this is reaching out to the member states. We have introduced new integrated set of tools to monitor progress at facility level and to launch a new knowledge platform, tracking country case studies and essential health service delivery. A head desk function also supports this work. Then, of course, we will keep member states and the governing bodies informed as we move forward with this very important initiative. To support this work, a lot of normative guidance has been developed in the programmatic areas. All in all, 550 guidance, and as Sumya pointed out, 400 of these have already been adopted in the non-COVID areas, in the programmatic areas, beyond all the guidance that has been developed by Mike and his team for the COVID-related work. This includes health services, like the use of personal protective equipment, or health worker protection and patient safety, which we released on the World Patient Safety Day on the 17th of September. But this also applies to areas like food safety, like healthy diet and continuity of nutrition services, also how to prevent violence, then guidance and recommendations on the opening schools, and many, many other areas. And of course, one of the important issues here is to translate this guidance into action in the member states, and to work with the member states to make this happen. And of course, it is our intention to increase the uptake in the countries, and Sumya has already addressed this. This is a continuous process that we have to proceed with. The third issue I would like to address finally is that work is ongoing to scale up and to improve the resilience of the health systems. And there are three lines of actions that I would like to mention here. Within the Health System Connector of ACTA, and also within the vaccine pillar, now that the COVAX facility is approved in principle by the GAVI board, our intention is to support the member states to deliver the newly developed tools, vaccines, therapeutics, and diagnostics, as well as PP and oxygen to the people in the countries, and to support the member states in this rollout. So therefore, we have started an end-to-end process, developing strategies on how to make this happen in the countries. And this will be a very important initiative of the next few months until the tools become available. Secondly, we learned a lot from this pandemic on the gaps in the health systems, and therefore, we have already started to work together with the colleagues from the emergency pillar of the House to fill these gaps. And many of these gaps were highlighted by countries, like I heard it from Finland, Denmark, and others, and these are all included in this process. And then finally, all this will need a strong primary healthcare system, and we have worked since the last EB on the rollout of the primary healthcare special program, which is the flagship of our Director General and an engine of universal health coverage. And for this, we also use the UHC partnership, which is active now in 115 countries, to boost this work. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Back to you, DG.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody, all countries, for the very explicit commitments around finding a global solution and the quest to ensure equitable access to the health technologies that will help people to, will help governments and people to face this pandemic in a more systematic way. And there were several questions related to the allocation framework as it applies to vaccines and the COVAX facility, and I'd like to address this especially responding to Israel, who is on behalf of other countries. First of all, the concerns around duplication or transparency, let me, when Mike Ryan was mentioning that we don't even know, because internally in WHO, we are all working together, right, on the allocation framework and the mechanism, it's a WEG, it's the access to medicines, it's the vaccines, it's colleagues from the immunization department. But when you're talking about the mechanism and how this fits into the facility, the mechanism for allocation of vaccines, I would even add, because we have teams that are working on it, that includes people from GAVI and SEPI, that are working together with WHO team. And it's a small team, core group, that's taking care of all this, and it's very much dedicated to avoid duplications and to also to keep in mind that we need an agile and a flexible process to be able to bring practical solutions quickly as the facility develops. So for the design right now, we do, in accordance with these three organizations, we are working with the proposal to have a joint allocation task force, that's a combination of WHO and GAVI. And we'll have, this joint allocation task force will prepare the allocation rounds, the proposals, for countries, and we'll have an independent advisory group, vaccines for vaccines, which will validate the allocation proposals. And this independent group will also report regularly to the Shareholders' Council in the COVAX facility. There was a question specifically on explainer on how the mechanism will work on Phase One and Phase Two, and I am happy to say that in a couple of weeks, we will be able to bring this out to you, and that we will do a dry run of the model in November, December already. Now, there were specific questions about Phase Two, and let me say first that some of the questions we have right now, we all have, will only be sorted out as we know more about the characteristics of the vaccine, about how many vaccines we'll have, how will we work with countries to address the countries' needs or preferences, and also how the stage policy recommendations will be formulated. So for Phase Two, where the design of Phase Two, there are too many uncertainties yet. You know, and we have a little bit of time to do that, and we will be bringing this discussion to member states as we develop the indicators, the criteria to assess threat and vulnerability, as was requested. Finally, we welcome the opportunity to have a dedicated discussion on the operationalization of the vaccines allocation mechanism as it relates to the COVAX facility, that would be from the governance to the ways of working and operationalization. We're happy to do that. But let me remind everyone that the framework itself is product agnostic, right? And we are right now developing, together with the Global Fund, UNITAID, and the Wellcome Trust, we're developing an allocation, a proposal, a draft proposal for an allocation mechanism for therapeutics. And we will be bringing, this is a commitment we already made with member states, we will be bringing this draft proposal for comments, for discussion with during member state briefing now in the month of October, and we'll do the same thing we did for the vaccines. We will do rounds of comments until we have a firm ground to move ahead. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Sumya. Thank you, colleagues. I will just take a few minutes to cover some of the areas. First of all, I would like to thank Austria for proposing the retreat. We will do everything to make it a success. Having closer working relationship with the governance is very important, which we have proposed actually since 2017. And it will be a good opportunity actually to discuss on how to engage during the retreat. The other parties, the weekly briefing, we have been doing it now for several months, nine months. If there is any way you want to format it, I think this is your session, so we would be happy, we're open to that too. So the weekly Thursday mission briefing can also be formatted based on your need. So we would appreciate it. We will meet also tomorrow if you have any suggestions on how best you want to use the weekly meeting. On the other issues, as you know, it's during situations like this, actually, some important things can be built. For instance, we're seeing in many countries a weak public health or weak primary healthcare. I think it has to be in this middle of the war or the fight against the pandemic, that countries should be able to really build it, make it strong. But we have seen its weaknesses, and that's why many countries were surprised. For instance, if you take how, you know, pandemics like this could give you some momentum or energy, we never thought that we would train millions from all over the world in such a short period of time. Not only millions, but in 41 languages. We were talking about multilingualism and say, okay, six UN languages, can we add one or two, maybe Hindu, then Swahili, that's it. Now you can't believe it, 41 languages. We can do even more. So we're using the opportunity now to strengthen the academy and to train even more, not just four or five millions. We have seen it can be stretched even more than that. The target for the academy is we can go up to 240 million health workers. It's doable. And languages, we can go beyond even 41. So moments like this can help us to do things differently, but at the same time big. So that's why we're saying let's use the opportunity to build national institutions and to build multilateral institutions like WHO, and it's doable. And the lessons we learn should help us to do that. I mean, using the IPPR, others we're saying, but some of those issues are very visible now. And beyond what I'm saying earlier, we can do them while working on the assessments, we can do things and do it faster and bigger. On the ACT Accelerator, it's another good example when how we respond when there is emergency. When ACT Accelerator was proposed, I remember some people were skeptical, because we had committees and so on among, you know, inter-agency committees, and many were not really sure if this could be successful. Since the launch, before the launch, actually, we started meeting, we haven't missed even a week. I think one week based on agreement, but principles meet for the ACT Accelerator, to make sure that the two objectives to make sure that the two objectives are met, meaning accelerate development of the products, vaccine therapeutics diagnostics, and also to discuss on the equitable distribution and to have guidelines and framework, as Maria Angela said. And I'd like to use this opportunity actually to thank those agencies, GAVI, SEPI, GAVI had joined us today, but those who haven't joined, SEPI, Global Fund, Unity, Wellcome Trust, Gates Foundation, the World Bank, and I don't know if I forgot, but. So I think these are the agencies and the level of commitment, you can't believe it. So the idea now is let's formalize this and take it to the future. This is a good opportunity to create something like this, a machine, then move it. And the research and development, by the way, accelerating, not just for this pandemic, but it can be done for other major health problems that we're facing. That's two. And then, the, on the allocation, takes me this to allocation. Allocation is political. Countries, okay, we have the allocation framework. W H O and partners have developed. Without political commitment, without political consensus, I don't think it can happen. What we're proposing is we have to vaccinate some people in all countries rather than all people in some countries. And for this, I know political leaders will have difficulty, but especially considering their own respective constituencies. Because to some extent, it's also taking risks. But at the same time, if their constituencies are told properly and if they're convinced, I think it can be acceptable. Because by vaccinating some in all countries, we're opening up the world faster. When the world is opened up faster, then there will be trade and investment opportunities. So each and every country not only benefits from better health, better fighting, I mean, ending the pandemic, but at the same time faster economic recovery. So using the proposal we're making, the framework, actually is in the interest of each and every country in the world. So that's why I say it's political. It has some difficulties in really convincing their respective constituencies, but it is the best instrument to address lives and livelihoods by opening up the world faster, the economic recovery faster. And people are now interested not only in having their lives back in terms of health, but also in terms of having their livelihoods back. So we will have the twin advantages. Then the last part I would like to mention, and here is, again, I say the public health and primary healthcare, but I think at the end of the day, the most important thing is now implementing what we have been saying all these years. While fighting this pandemic, I think building the health system, the universal health coverage, the health for all, there should be really an honest and genuine commitment from all countries. We have this declaration for U H C last year from the UN General Assembly. I think it's time now to move into action rather than having paper after paper, commitment after commitment, and document after, after document. So thank you so much for your guidance and inputs to all those who have commented today, to all our member states. And thank you so much also to our Chair, Dr. Harsh Vardhan, for your leadership. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Ted Ross, and your able team of doctors and other scientists at the W H O headquarters. I must congratulate you for the excellent presentation that you made and your team elaborated in great detail. And also the final summing up by you and your team, addressing all the concerns and all the queries and all the observations that were made during the course of the day. I think it has been a very fruitful day, very good, very useful. And I'm sure that all the members of the Executive Board and others, non-members and other organizations, UN, everybody has enjoyed the day. Now, I would request and give the floor to the Russian Federation so that they can exercise their right of reply. Russian Federation, you can have the floor, please.
Thank you, Chair. We are obliged to take the floor in the form of a right of reply linked to the speech from Georgia. The Russian Federation, we are fully against the accusation that has been leveled at us by the Georgian delegation. We condemn the attempts of Georgia to politicize our work within the W H O E B regarding their comments about the occupation of Aparzia and Shkyn Valley. And this is not true. Aparzia and South Esetia have not been occupied by anybody. And this is confirmed by a report that has been prepared by the European Union in the year of 2017. The situation between Georgia and these two sovereign states is a result of the situation that took place in 2008. We call upon the delegation to engage in constructive dialogue so that we can effectively respond to the pandemic. We are fully willing to cooperate with all partners, and we want to assist all countries in combating COVID-19. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, Russian Federation. So this concludes the board's work for today. Namaste. The meeting is now adjourned and see you all tomorrow again at twelve zero zero hours.
Mr. Chair, excuse me, Your Excellency, Mr. Chair. We understand that there is another member state wishing to take the floor. If you just bear with us one moment, please, sir.
Okay, okay, okay. Sure, sure. I am told that Georgia wants to come to the floor. Georgia, you have the floor, please.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President, for the floor. We didn't want to take a floor again, but we just want to add our statement that Russian Federation as an illegal occupant power exercises effective control in occupied territories of Aparzia and Shkyn Valley region. And because of the borderization and denied given medical evacuation from these regions, approximately fifteen cases of death we have seen September 2019. And until the occupation of the territories, the responsibility of Russia, the responsibility on the existing situation is Russian, is the responsibility of Russian Federation. Thank you, Mr. President.
Your Chair, our regional directors were supposed to also respond to some of the issues raised with your permission, if you can. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Okay. Ardis, please raise your hand if you're interested to speak.
Thank you, Dr. Ted Ross. We understand that the regional director for Afro, Dr. Moetti, would wish to take the floor. Dr. Moetti, should you still be with us? The floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair, for allowing me to speak right at the end of this session. And I thank members of the Executive Board for this opportunity. Just briefly first to say that in the African region, we recognize that the 1.2 million cases that have been reported and the 26,000 people that have sadly lost their lives possibly represent an underrepresentation of the situation. My partner.
Stay with me, you're the floor now.
We are possibly underrepresented the situation because our regions, countries have had huge difficulties in accessing some of the supplies and equipment for testing. Nevertheless, we observe that the epidemic is not as there as some initial projections foretold. I'd like here to recognize the swift and decisive actions taken by African leaders and governments in putting in place physical distancing measures such as border closures, limiting gatherings, which we know came at a huge cost for national economies and also for household welfare. This created a window of opportunity to strengthen capacities building on experiences from past epidemics of Ebola, of polio, of Lassa fever, among others. COVID-19 testing was scaled up, the DG said it, from two to forty-five countries in just a few weeks, and training of healthcare workers ramped up in surveillance, infection prevention and control, case management, and other critical areas. We would like, as the Secretary, to echo the call of Kina Faso on behalf of the forty-seven member states of the African region for global solidarity, including, it was stated, debt repayment, rescheduling, debt forgiveness, and equity across and within countries, including particularly in distributing COVID-19 technologies such as vaccines. And we've been very happy to participate in the COVAX discussions of this mechanism, which we recognize is key in working together towards this. We've already started as well to work with our member states towards readiness to deploy the vaccine and other technologies when they become available. Our region faces significant challenges as far as primary healthcare and the performance of our health systems concerned. So the essential services pillar is an important component of our incident management and the work that we are doing with our member states. Now, as countries and partners sustain a strong response to COVID-19, communities must be enabled to play their role and internalize adherence to the preventive measures. We must also proactively address challenges of complacency and vaccine hesitancy. Chair, I'd finally like to make reference to the problem of sexual exploitation and abuse about which several member states have expressed concern and join the sentiments expressed by Dr. Tedros in our response as W H O to this problem. I look forward to working together with the Director General on the investigation that we are, whose preparation we are finalizing, and on improving our platforms, including for whistleblowers and communities, and most importantly, for the most vulnerable people with whom we work, women in the field. I had a town hall meeting with my staff on Friday emphasizing these points. And we welcome the contributions from all member states and partners to us ensuring that we are indeed able to exercise zero tolerance of sexual exploitation and abuse in our workplaces and in all the operations that we have in our member states. I thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you very much to Dr. Moetti, our regional director for Afro. I understand there would be several other regional directors online wishing to take the floor. A reminder to those that do wish to take the floor to kindly raise your hand in a Zoom function. I hereby recognize our regional director for the Eastern Mediterranean, for Emro, and the floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chairman, and dear E B members and members. The situation facing us this year globally and in our region is unprecedented. It has tested and challenged us all as countries, health institutions, humanitarian agencies, and communities as well. It has revealed cracks in our healthcare systems, in our preparedness and response capabilities, and even in our ability as communities and individuals to cope. It has also challenged the multilateralism of the international system. A few weeks ago, we reached a grim milestone as more than two million cases of COVID-19 were reported across our region in the Eastern Mediterranean. Several countries that had successfully controlled transmission a few months ago are now seeing an acceleration of the cases. In some countries, hospitals are already overwhelmed and intensive care units are filled to capacity, resulting in potentially serious consequences to others who require life-saving medical services for both COVID-19 and other medical conditions. Essential health services has been disrupted in our region. Seventy-five percent of essential services have some degree of interruption. This is leaving people without access to care and requiring additional support in short-term community, including protection of healthcare workers. Looking ahead, several newest factors are also challenging our ability to substantially enter the course of the pandemic across the region, including upcoming schools, schools reopening, mass gatherings, and flu season, which is about to start in the coming months. COVID-19 fatigue is also real. Populations are tiring of the restrictions and behaviors required to control COVID-19. And so we must maintain constant vigilance and engagement of communities. Limited reporting of the actual situation by some countries is embedding our capacity to respond to the scale required. In these countries, we are all working, we are also working on the assumption that the community transmission is was. But we are also facing challenges related to limited testing capacity and providing sufficient protective equipments for health workers. In many countries of the region, the flu season is also about to start, which may result in new peaks and upsells of suspected cases. We have to accelerate our readiness and response efforts. The past nine months have shown us that there are proven measures that can contain this pandemic, but there is much more to be done. Leadership matters in ensuring a whole of society and the whole of government approach. Community engagement matters in ensuring that people adhere to prevention and protective, to protection measures and know when and how to seek immunity. We know that works, we know what works, but these measures must be done at large scale with better quality and with better monitoring of impact. Our collective response must be evidence-based and science-based as well. We still have an opportunity to contain the pandemic in our region so that societies, economies, and life can resume. At the race to find an effective vaccine continues. I am happy to see many countries in the region contribute to global rights. We need to ensure that most vulnerable populations, many of which live in our region, have access to safe and effective vaccine and when it is available, regardless of geographic location, political affiliations, or economic status. The virus can only be effectively controlled with coordination, collaboration, leadership, and community engagement on a scale bigger than what we have seen so far. Building on the progress and lessons learned thus far, I am hopeful that we can succeed. Commitment, solidarity, vigilance, and optimism, as what have been mentioned by all speakers, will be the key stone, cornerstone, or the key success factor for that. I thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much to our regional director for the Eastern Mediterranean. I should now wish to call upon the regional director for Euro. Dr. Klug, you have the floor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, dear member states. I would like to express appreciation to all the fifty-three member states of the W H O European region for having approved at the last region committee, my first region committee, the EPW European Program of Work 2020-2025, United Action for Better Health. Of course, I had expected my first year to be totally different, but I am very humbled by the strong support of the member states and all the partners. We have been responding and supporting in the COVID response in three ways. The first one, keeping direct contact with each of the fifty-three member states to give a tailored support. Second, increasing the partnership. We signed a joint statement with the European Commission and would like to express my appreciation to the Commissioner, Dr. Stella Kirakidis, but also expanding partnerships outside the European Union, like the Turkey Council and the Red Lake Economic Union. And the third axis was to move forward to a W H O physical versus to pursue the transformation program. to pursue the transformation programme. We have convened the Pan-European Commission on Health and Sustainable Development to rethink policy priorities in the light of the pandemics, to think with seventeen high-level commissioners, how did society in Europe change since the COVID and what does it mean for investment in health and social care to move to an economy of well-being? And we're very humbled that Professor Mario Monti from Italy agreed to chair this commission, which has a close link with the IPPR. And we have the full support of Dr. Tedros, who also has our full support. Finally, I would like to express my commitment to further the agenda in Europe, but within the global context. I am very grateful to all five region directors for their support to me as an incoming director. And whatever we can do for the other regions, we stand at your service. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much to Dr. Klug, our regional director for Europe. I should now like to call upon the regional director of the Southeast Asia region. Dr. Punam, you have the floor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, distinguished delegates. The values that have been expressed in Resolution WHO 73.1 on COVID-19 have been central to the Southeast Asia region's response and continue to guide the work of WHO and the member states of the region. From the beginning of the outbreak, the region and its member states have acted with speed, scale and solidarity to control and suppress spread, strengthen and maintain health services and empower individuals and communities to stay safe, healthy and well. Fully aware that the disruptive potential of COVID-19 could lead to an increase in non-COVID mortality and morbidity, as several member states have pointed out, the region has for many months placed great emphasis on maintaining essential health services as highlighted in WHO 73.1 and Pillar Nine of WHO Strategic Preparedness and Response Plan, which aligns well with region's sustain, accelerate, innovate vision. In pursuit of this objective, at a ministerial round table at the recently concluded seventy-third session of the WHO Regional Committee for Southeast Asia, member states adopted the Southeast Asia Ministerial Declaration for a collective response to COVID-19. The declaration highlights member state's commitment to maintain essential health services. It calls for securing the occupational safety of health workers, strengthening health information systems and the uptake of digital health technologies and advancing health policy and systems research on COVID-19. Amid intense fiscal pressures, health leaders in the region continue to underscore the re-earneet to not only sustain but also scale up into investments in universal health coverage to strengthen the response and build health systems resilience. Since 2014, scaling up emergency risk management has been one of the region's flagship priority programmes towards which member states have already made great progress. Though countries in the region are at different stages of the response, in areas where cases are increasing, so too is the intensity of your measures being rolled out, especially at the sub-national level and as countries prepare for the flu season. Throughout the COVID-19 response and into the recovery and beyond, the region will continue to strengthen emergency risk management in line with its flagship priority and WHO's triple billion targets. As many of the member states have stressed in their interventions today, equitable and transparent allocation of vaccines will be a key priority. I would like to emphasize what the Director General, Dr. Tedros, mentioned, that global solidarity is key to fight the virus as we move forward in the new normal world. Thank you.
Thank you very much to Dr. Punam, regional director for Southeast Asia. As I don't see any additional hands up, I should now wish to hand back to the Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, our regional directors from Africa, Emro, European Region and CRO for your valuable contribution. Right now, your interventions have certainly made the meeting richer in its content and quality. And I must thank you and especially the DG who requested the RDs also to speak on this occasion. I am sorry I had adjourned the meeting since I didn't know that the regional directors also wanted to speak. I'm sorry for that, but I think this concludes the board's work for today. And now we can adjourn the meeting and then with a promise that we'll all meet again tomorrow at twelve zero zero hours Central European Time, sixth of October, 2020. Thank you all for your wholehearted cooperation, everyone at the WHO headquarters and in our regions. Namaste.